Some big items to tackle, so let's get underway at 7:01. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, March 8, 2021, meeting of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. Deb, could you please give us the roll call?
Chairman Garvin.
Yeah.
Counsel Boucher.
Here.
Counsel Deveraux.
Here.
Counsel Gabrielson.
Here.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan.
Here.
Counsel Penelope Jordan.
Yeah.
And Counsel Noonan.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we pledge allegiance to the flag, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible. Justice for all. Got a little twisted up there, sorry. I think I said before that will never not get awkward with this setup. Okay, does anybody have any correspondence or reports to go over? Go ahead, Jeremy.
I just wanted to make a quick announcement for the council and any members of the public who may be interested. The Fort Williams Park Committee recently received a first set of draft recommendations from the vendor who is working on the master plan update. And those will be reviewed at the Fort Williams Park Committee meeting on St. Patrick's Day, March 17. So if anyone's interested in getting a glimpse at what those draft recommendations are, I'd recommend turning in, tuning in for that. There's some pretty thought-provoking recommendations in there. I think it'll be made for some good discussion.
Jeremy, any questions for Jeremy on that? Any other counselors have anything they want to report on?
Yes, I met with Tom Myers and a few other Cliff House Beach neighborhood residents just to talk about their process and how they came up with their very collaborative approach to parking in that area.
I did as well, so.
Anybody else with anything? I wanted to just take a minute to offer on behalf of the community condolences to a couple of Cape Elizabeth families. The first being the family of Fire and Rescue Department Rescue Captain Stephen Peters. He served the community for more than 16 years as a member of the rescue and held the rank of captain for more than half of that time. And in particular was instrumental in organizing a lot of the resources around the Beach to Beacon race. So want to pass along to the communities, thanks for his service and our condolences to his family. And also, the hockey community in town had a loss this weekend when John Woods passed away. So we want to send out our thoughts and sympathies to his wife and children, who are all Cape grads. And express our sadness for his loss and wish them well during this difficult time. So don't mean to start off on a dour note, but two important members of the community that I wanted to recognize and offer condolences for. So if nobody has anything else, I'll turn it over to Counsel Gabrielson for the Finance Committee report.
Great. Thanks, Jamie. So I'm gonna keep it relatively brief because I imagine the manager is going to hit on some of the high points in his report, and we've got an agenda item on this later on. But the highlights are, you know, in terms of expenses, we're still tracking pretty well with our budgeted. What our budget forecasts are, we've made it through what is, I would imagine at this point, probably the bulk of the winter plow season. In pretty good shape. Yeah, thanks, Matt. Appreciate that. Although maybe frankly, take it back because my skis haven't seen that much use. And also want to note that we have a draft budget. So many thanks to the manager and the department heads for pulling that, you know, all the work that went into pulling that draft budget document together. Just a couple of quick highlights from that. The initial draft is looking at just under a three and a half percent increase in the tax rate while taking on some of the capital items that were deferred from last year. A lot of that is managed through the use of the million dollars in unassigned fund balance. So a good, good out of the gate budget that I look forward to discussing more in our upcoming Budget Committee meetings, which we'll be discussing later. One other quick note for counselors, as well as any members of the public. I wanted to extend an invitation from Phil Sossier, who is the Chair of the Finance Committee on the School Board, for folks to attend their budget sessions as well. They have two upcoming Q and As, one tomorrow night and one on March 23, which are both at 6:30, and then they also will be holding the School Budget Workshop on April 6, which is also a Tuesday at 6:30. I'd encourage everyone to tune in and see how the school budget is shaping up. Initial signs look good.
Thank you, Counsel Gabrielson. Is there any question for Jeremy? Okay, seeing none. Next up on the agenda is citizen opportunity for discussion of any items that are not on tonight's agenda. We've got right now about 53 folks in our audience. And if there's anybody that would like to speak about something that is not on our agenda for this evening, now's your opportunity to do so. I'll call on you if you use the raise hand function in the Zoom meeting. Matt will open up your mic, and if you could just give us your name and address and limit your comments to about three minutes or less. That would be great, and I will be timing here. So if you hear a little timer that goes off in the background, that's your cue to wrap up. So first in the queue is, it's just listed as Magnoli here, so Matt, if you could open that up. And again, your name and address, please. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. My name is Mario Magnoli. I live at 15 Dearborn Drive. I'll make it quick. I know we have a lot of important things to talk about, but I just wanted to share my concern with how aggressively the Town Council has seemed to push the new apartment developments. Looking at the comprehensive plan that you collected, which I think is fantastic. You did ask citizens, what types of housing developments could you support? When asked about apartments, 19% of the people said they would support new developments of apartments. That means 81% of this town doesn't support it. So it seems as though maybe there's a disconnect in that area between, I guess, what the comprehensive plan says and what the Town Council is doing. And I do understand that you are working to try to solve some problems that we have addressed, like we would encourage diversity, things like that, and that's fantastic. I think, however, we're trying to solve the problem in a way that is not wanted. That's all. I do appreciate everything you all are doing. You are all fantastic, and that's all. I just wanted to share my concerns.
Thank you, Mario. I'm going to take just a second to respond briefly, just because the one thing I think I am, I don't want to speak on everybody's behalf, but I'd be surprised if anybody felt differently, is that your comment started off by saying that the council is aggressively pushing something that I just take, I disagree with that point, such that we have had one meeting on this where we referred proposed and requested amendments to the Planning Board to begin what is intended to be a thorough and deliberate process with them reviewing and then coming back to the council with possible recommendations pertaining to those exemptions. Other than that, the council has taken no action and is not currently anticipating doing anything, let alone doing it aggressively or expeditiously. So I know that there's been a lot of communication. I'm just taking this opportunity of your comments to respond also, I think, to a lot of communication that the Town Council's received on this item, which we appreciate from the community. As I think, the main point I just want to get across is that there's been very little specific action of any kind that the council has taken or has immediate plans to take short of what's already been done to refer this to the Planning Board for an initial review. So that's number one. I will also make mention since it's come up that there's a virtual meeting, Town Hall, virtual listening session, learning session that the community is invited to on Wednesday, that the developer is hosting. It's not something that's being hosted by the town or the Town Council, but the developer's hosting. But if you're interested in learning more about the project, and I think there's a moderated way to ask questions. I don't think they're going to be having open mic for questions. But there's a way to submit questions in advance that they'll address and/or leverage the chat function in that meeting. So I think we have that information on our website that people can check out and sign up for that meeting. But anyway, thank you, though, for your comments tonight. Are there other members of the public that have anything they wish to speak about that's not on tonight's agenda? I don't see any hands going up. So with that, we will get to item number eight on the agenda, which is a review of the draft minutes of the meeting held on February 8, 2021. Is there anybody from the council that would, oh, Matt, go ahead?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to do a manager's report at all?
Oh, I beg your pardon? Did I skip right past that? Sorry about that. Go right ahead, Matt.
I was trying to be brief. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take a quick moment to note a couple of different things. First of all, I want to let folks know the Community Services brochure is online, and it will be in the mail and delivered, we anticipate, by Friday for the hard copy. So keep your eyes out for that. There's a lot of optimistic programming coming forward from all ages. And I know they're very proud of the brochure and the programming for this upcoming, upcoming season. I want to take a moment to congratulate two officers who really went above and beyond the call of duty about a week and a half ago in South Portland and responding to a shooting incident that was an accidental shooting. Officers Aaron Webster and Rory Benjamin responded to a distress call from the city of South Portland. They were the first responders on the scene. And with our officers also being EMTs, in this instance, they came through and saved a man's life by applying two tourniquets. And without their heroic actions, just over the line in South Portland, they would be down one resident due to a gruesome accident. So he's still here, and we have two officers who just exemplify the great and professional service that they provide to many. So couldn't be happier or more proud of those two gentlemen. South Portland is also looking to nominate them both for a lifesaver award. So it's an annual award that goes out, and I have a feeling they may be the leaders in the clubhouse when it comes to that. So really amazing work, and I'm proud of them both. With last week's change or announcement with the governor with the changes to the, or I guess you would call it her main moving forward plan, we are currently in discussion with staff on a new opening plan. So we are working on that to come forward with getting things closer to normal than they've been in roughly 12 months. We're optimistic to come forward with a hybridized opening, looking at the library in the month of April. We do have some challenges still, and I think we'll see those restrictions being lifted from the governor's office to the five people per 1,000 square feet that we run into, and our spaces are still limited when it comes to that. But I'm more optimistic at this point in time than I have been in probably 10 months since we started shutting everything down, that we will be getting closer to that. So the librarian has had a plan, Rachel Davis has had a plan to move forward with the library as far as reopening that. And then speaking with staff today, we're probably looking for a Town Hall reopening for May 1. And so we're optimistic for that as well. Numbers keep looking in decent shape. We're looking for further guidance from the governor's office because they have, we are somewhat hamstrung, as I said, by the five person per 1,000 square foot area. That does give us some limitations, but I have, I'm hopeful that that will also be lifted or eased as we go forward. Probably looking at Zoom meetings for a while, though, as far as that, doing the math on the five people, you can be able to roughly get about five additional people in, as well as different committees, if we were having in-person meetings in the building. So but there is light at the end of the tunnel, and I am optimistic and looking forward to getting to that place much sooner than, much sooner than I was thinking even a week ago. So I'll have a better update when we get to April as well, and more, more solidified plans. But to even be thinking of having a plan, I couldn't be happier, and we're looking to get that back. We do have taxes due at the start of April, and we do have that Dropbox, and people are very familiar with that. So we are encouraging people to use that as they have had last year. So that seems to be a good workaround. But we will have, as I say, for future updates to come. And as they, if anything changes sooner than that, then we'll be happier to advance our plans. And that's pretty much, I do have additional items, as Counsel Gabrielson had spoken earlier, but I'll save that for when we do have the launch of the budget later on in the council agenda. Just rest assured, I have all of their documents sitting here. I delivered to the council Friday electronically, and you will have them physically delivered by policemen to your properties tomorrow, as well as a couple of the reports that I'm taking advantage of the courier service to have delivered to you. So but it's a 212-page document is the total bill on that, so, sorry, 226. So if you have had, need some reading materials, we are happy to oblige. So look forward to the rest of the meeting, and that's what I have for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt before we move on? Okay, now we'll move to the draft minutes. Is there any counselor that wishes to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Jamie. I move that we accept the minutes from the February 8, 2021 Town Council meeting.
Thank you very much. Motion by Counsel Penny Jordan. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Deveraux, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Deb, can you read the roll call, please?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number nine, which is number 42-2021, which we tabled from our February 8, 2021 meeting on the Short Term Rental Amendments. So first, we need a motion to take this off of the table, and I was actually reminded by a former counselor, my Robert Rolls faux pas last month, where we should have voted to put something on the table. I thought it only required a first and a second. But anyway, that housekeeping aside, got my trusty Robert's rules by my side, just in case we need to pull it out again. But in any case, is there a motion to take the item off the table?
So move. Second.
Got a motion from Counsel Gabrielson, second by Counsel Penny Jordan. Any discussion? So we'll vote on that.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so item number 42-2021 is now back on the table. I'm going to ask if there are members of the public that wish to comment on this. We've got 59 folks in our attendees right now. Before I move to public comment, which I expect we'll hear, council's aware, we've received a substantial amount of email on this topic leading up to this, you know, representing opinions on both sides of the matter and down the middle, frankly. So I just wanted, I didn't count the exact number of emails, but it was significant. I also want to, after having spoken to one of the folks that did email today, just based on the volume of email that was generated on this, I make every effort to try and email people back sometimes, and I know other counselors do as well. I'm not singling myself out in that regard. I just want to assure people that your emails are read, they are considered, and they are taken into account. If you don't receive a specific reply, I don't want anybody to think that your email is not, has not been read or is being ignored. Sometimes there are issues, you know, that generate such interest that we do get overwhelmed with the volume of email, and it becomes difficult to reply to everybody. The only other thing I wanted to say about that, too, is based on the fact that we've been talking about this for a long time, I think most of our conversation and opinions have been made known in the course of public meetings and public workshops, too. So while the council is appreciative of receiving further input, I'm not sure in some cases, how much more people had to add back as a reply. But in any case, I just wanted to set people's mind to these, that your emails are read. Anyway, so is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this issue? We've had a public hearing, so I'm hopeful that the comment period can be contained to the 15 minutes that we have allotted. If you're interested in speaking, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom meeting. And you'll be recognized. I don't see any hands going up. There they go. Nobody wanted to be first, but Jill S., you're going to be first. You're the first at the top of the queue. And so when Matt opens your mic in a second, if you could give us your name and address and try and limit your comments to about three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, Jill Seaman, 34 Shipwreck Cove Road. I've been on many of the meetings, and I understand the direction where this is going. But my one question was about people who rented last year, who followed state guidelines and did not come last summer and extended to this summer. So these contracts have now been in place for about a year. Is the town making any accommodations for those people? I'm not talking about people that have rented in this other last couple of months. I understand that. It's just the people who, in good faith, did what they were supposed to do and have extended to then come this summer. Would we have to cancel those? That's my question.
Thanks, Jill, for your question. I think we'll probably get to that in the course of discussion to address it as an answer. So I'm going to move on to other topics, but I don't, I'll make sure that your question is answered through our discussion. Next up is Scott Dobos. Scott, if you could give us your name and address in a second. Go ahead. Your mic's open.
Good evening. Scott Dobos. I live at 8 Farmhouse Road in Scarborough. I work as a professional vacation rental manager and work with many property owners in Cape Elizabeth. I had one question. Would you please clarify what the violations are for marketing property for short-term rent without a permit? The ordinance references Section 19-8-14 of Capable of zoning, which references the main statute under Planning and Land Use Regulation, Subchapter Enforcement of Land Use Regulations. Obviously, that's a mouthful, but it was also difficult for me to find. If it's difficult for me, and I'm somewhat of a nerd, I don't think anyone, especially the people it's meant to deter, may find it. Comments on the ordinance, what this ordinance will not do, it will not eliminate bad actors in Cape Elizabeth or offer relief to your constituents who have lived or are living next to bad actors. The scenario I'm going to read isn't something I will partake in, just to be very clear. It seems like an oversight or perhaps not understanding the rental market in Cape Elizabeth, or I absolutely don't understand the statute that I referenced. The scenario I'm reading assumes that the maximum fine for repeatedly violating the ordinance is capped at $25,000. Is that once ever, once per year, once per two years? I'm not totally sure. I'm basing this scenario off $25,000 per year fine. A bad actor rents their home for $10,000 per week during the summer. That actor has three substantiated violations because, well, they simply don't care to get a permit. It ignores the ordinance altogether. The bad actor would get a maximum fine of $25,000. If you were a bad actor, would it be worth sacrificing two and a half weeks' worth of your summer rent and rent 49 and a half other weeks in a year, in any manner of your choosing? What this ordinance will do, the ordinance will eliminate owners that only rent for two weeks a year at a lower rental rate because the permit is cost prohibitive to those specific owners and simply not worth it for them. It will eliminate many, and I would even say most, of the property owners that do care about the communities they live in, the neighborhoods their homes are in, finding and screening for respectful and appreciative guests, while at the same time creating the perfect scenario for a bad actor to have little to no market competition in what we would all agree is a stunning place to visit in the summer. For the bad actor, it would also yield an even larger rental rate than what I was referencing above, making it even easier to pay their $25,000 per year fine. I point this out because you're not accomplishing what you think you are by having this ordinance as it's written. I know how many hours and meetings you've spent discussing this and trying to make it work. The hosted stay owners you are trying to protect so they can generate income as homestead residents wouldn't be able to rent for periods less than a week. You are essentially eliminating them entirely as their rentals don't work the way you think they do. The hosted and unhosted primary residence owners that live in or out of state, and the owners that unfortunately live next to one of the bad actor properties all have something in common. They all care deeply about the Cape Elizabeth community. The bad actors don't. Please don't set up the perfect system for them to flourish in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Likewise, I imagine that we'll take up answers to some of your questions, Scott, as part of the discussion period. Next up is Jim Kearney. Jim, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jim Kearney. I live at 1015 Shore Road. My wife and I have been operating our property for four years now on the Airbnb platform for, you know, under the 14-night federal casual rental maximum. I just want to say you guys have all done a great job of creating the standards and enforcement policies to preserve our neighborhoods and protect our residents against what is now known to be very few known egregious violators. Thanks for this work. Hopefully, the known issues on loss in Richmond and elsewhere will soon be resolved. I am, however, concerned that you slightly missed the mark by eliminating the largest category of historical Cape Elizabeth operators, which is the less than 14-night or casual households which operate within the U.S. federal tax code as non-business or casual rental homes. As for my letter of the 16th of February, there is a way to include these operators as a subcategory in the primary residence unhosted category and make a few changes while still enabling the strict enforcement needed for any violator. This will also increase the likelihood of our residents to adopt the program by financially supporting the STL program through fees while significantly decreasing the burden on our Code's enforcement office. So my simple recommendation to this is to create a casual category under primary residence unhosted. Under this subcategory, the maximum number of rental nights would change from 42 to 14 nights. And because this would be a casual, not a commercial use of the property, the following three things would happen. It would change the requirement for site inspection to optional or random instead of mandatory. Number two, eliminate the need for the costly egress lighting, which is, you know, anywhere from probably $3,500 to $7,000 per household for people that rent their houses for less than 14 nights. And then I think we should also align the permit fees around both the opportunity for the renters and the cost of the town. So instead of $500, it would be somewhere in the $100 to $150 a year range. This would still enable strict enforcement of all the regulations as well as focused enforcement of the problem properties while increasing the fees generated and decreasing the administrative burden on the Code's office. Without the inclusion of this subcategory, I would ask the council members to reject the STL amendments on the grounds that they do not yet on the grounds that they do not yet adequately represent the vast majority of respected operators in town, and they substantially increase the administrative burden of our town staff beyond its bandwidth. Now, I don't have a duck in this race. I also don't believe the seven-day clause should apply to the primary residence hosted category. I think everything else that's in here is brilliantly done. Thank you for your work. I just wanted to state that hopefully not too difficult change.
Thank you, Jim. Are there other members of the public wishing to speak? Again, not seeing any hands going up. See Victoria Valentin's hand up now. So Matt, I'll open your mic in a second, Victoria. It might be muted on your end. There you go.
Okay, thank you. I also do hope that you will move forward on this tonight. I've written you so many letters, and you've heard from everyone, and I think this is a very good document at this time, if you would remove the primary unhosted short-term rentals. In regards to that last comment about two weeks having, not having inspections, not having security lighting, I would say that when the planning board looked at this a number of years ago, the first draft, they thought safety was the number-one issue. And if you were going to invite somebody into your home, whether it's one week, two weeks, 52 weeks out of the year, you should include safety measures. That's why the Code Enforcement Officer goes out. That is why we suggested the lighting and all the other health and safety issues, because that really is number-one item. So I hope we don't continue down further discussion on something in which you're not going to be looking at health and safety items. Otherwise, I hope you take your vote tonight, and I hope you do remove the unhosted short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's another hand that's gone up, just says Cindy. So if you could give us your name and address, please. Just a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'm getting allowed to talk is not available because Cindy's on an older version of Zoom.
Okay. Can you promote her to?
I can promote it to a panelist and then. Sorry about that. Hold on just.
The same person that we had this with last month. Yeah, there we go.
There you go. Perfect.
Okay, go ahead. Nope, you're on mute, I think. Cindy, I think.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Can you?
Oh, we did for a second. I think you're back on mute.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'd like to comment on two or three things that have been mentioned tonight. First of all, I strongly feel that by eliminating people from renting who are not their, whose rentals are not their primary residences will hugely improve the situation. And also with the increased code enforcement. If you don't, I think those are the people that mostly cause the problems with renting to too many people, not following rules within, and other issues in neighborhoods. So I think that's going to improve things. Secondly, I have hosted, I have had an unhosted rental for eight years, not including 2020 because of the pandemic. And I would like to continue being able to do that, having had no problems. Because an unhosted rental is what more people are interested in, especially families. They don't want one or two rooms to rent. They want to be able to rent the whole house and be able to use the yard. And it's more financially, it enables you to do a little better with your rental than an unhosted rental would. There was one more thing I was going to comment on. Let's see, the unhosted rentals. I guess that's primarily what I wanted to say, that I think that with the new code, things will improve greatly. Also, is the proposed fee $500 now to get a permit for an ordinance? Be able to be able to get a permit? What is the fee for the ordinance that the ordinance is proposing?
The ordinance proposes. Yep, the ordinance proposes that the permit fee be $500.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Did you hear my answer? Cindy, the ordinance proposes that the fee be $500.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear us now, Cindy?
Did you hear my question?
Yep, can you hear us?
I think that is a very high fee to be charging us. No, I didn't. Yep. Yes, I did hear that. Um, I think that's too high. Oh, the second thing, the third thing that I wanted, what? What did you say?
I was going to say, the three minutes for your comment has run out. So we're going to move on if that's okay.
The third thing I wanted to say was, I don't, I'm not quite sure what a couple of speakers were saying about 14 days of non-hosted. Does that mean 14 days per year, allowing people to have a non-hosted rental?
I'm going to move on, Ms. Dusset, and we're going to try and clarify that in the comments and discussion that the council has. But I thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak before we move into the council discussion? I see Leslie Fissmer is next up in the queue.
It should be good to go, Ms. Fissmer.
Go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to ask a question about unhosted rentals. Do you check to make sure that the owner of the properties are indeed homesteaded? And it is their primary residence?
So what's being proposed, it's not in effect yet, is that what you're asking about?
No, I'm asking if you check to make sure that people are indeed homesteaded at that address.
So what's in the draft language that's being considered this evening is to make that a requirement. It's not a current requirement. So are you asking if that's currently done? Or are you asking if it's going to be done should this move forward?
No, I know it's going to be done. I just want to make sure that it is authorized.
That it is what?
Authorized, that it is actually verified.
Right, so the proposed language indicates that the property needs to be the primary residence that, having applied for and have the property designation, is what satisfies that requirement. And should anybody do that falsely, that they're subject to penalty under state statute.
Great, that's all I needed to know. Thanks for your good work.
Okay, thank you. Are there other folks that wish to speak? I see Tim Hebda, 55 Richmond Terrace.
On behalf of families and residents negatively affected by unhosted STR Richmond Terrace, Lawson Road, Two Lights Road, Boathouse Lane, Rocky Point Lane, Angel Point Road, Peoples Cove Road, Grover Road, Ironclad Road, Wayne White Drive, and many more, we ask one last time to please remove primary resident unhosted as a permitted use. Not allowing unhosted short-term rentals aligns with the planning board's recommendation and is the only way to completely solve this problem and return peace and safety to our neighborhoods. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Tim. We're just about to the 15 minutes of public comment period here. Are there, is there anybody else that hasn't spoken yet that's intending to speak? If you could raise your hand. I don't see any hands going up. I don't see any hands going up. Okay, seeing none, we'll close. This will be the last one, then. Jeff Dusset, you're next.
Mr. Chairman, I ran into the same challenge here. I'm going to be promoting Jeff to a panelist, and it'll just take me a moment.
Okay, Jeff.
Hi, thank you, everyone. And thank you to the council. I know there's a lot of conflicting opinions about this, and I think you guys did do a great job trying to reach as much consensus as possible. I know that there's a lot of sentiment against unhosted rentals. I'd just like to express a few things on the other side. For one, I think of a teacher that I had in the Cape School System who rented, she had an unhosted rental for about eight weeks each summer years back. I haven't kept in touch. I don't know if that might still be going on. But she did move herself. She was a single parent. She moved herself and her two kids out of the home for eight weeks each summer. Her neighbors had no problem with it. They were happy for her. It was needed income. And I think that more citizens could reflect upon that and kind of understand that side of it. I think that the primary residence requirement will go a huge way in solving the irresponsible STR owner issue. You know, the people who do have their primary residence here are invested in the neighborhood. They're invested in the community. They don't want to be a burden on their neighbors. They don't want to impact quality of life. And so, you know, I really think there's a lot in here to increase oversight and to basically ban a good portion of rentals. And I think that's sufficient. I don't think we need to go further. Ideally, I think that we would allow a greater number of days each year for unhosted primary residences to be rented. It's not just the teacher I had in the Cape School System who really benefited from this. It's also, I'm in my mid-30s. I have friends my age who have done it just a few weeks a year, but it's been very beneficial to them and their children to be able to do that. I think of low-income seniors. I think of people affected by the pandemic unable to work, you know, either because their company had to downsize or because they're in a vulnerable group. So I think that we should remember these people and also perhaps consider that they're not as likely to speak up. And, you know, so we do have to take them into account.
Thank you, Jeff. Could I just get your address, too, please, for the minute?
I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Cindy Dusset, who's at 43 Richmond Terrace.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. We definitely eclipsed the 15 minutes. So seeing no hands raised, if there's nobody else wishing to speak, there's no need to ask the council whether or not to extend the comment period here. I'd like to move on to consideration of the item. The one thing I will say just at the outset is that the intention, certainly heading into this meeting, is for the council to take action on this tonight. And one of the things that we've talked about at previous meetings was what the effective date would be for the ordinance, should it be passed, which was to be July 1. In just some conversation this afternoon with the manager and assistant manager, I do want to point out that if significantly substantive changes, which is a somewhat admittedly subjective characterization, but if significantly substantive changes are offered here this evening, then there may be a need for us to consider having a vote on this at our April meeting with the possibility of having to have another public hearing in between. So I just want to throw that out there. That doesn't at all change the potential implementation date, should that be the case. We'd still be, you know, have plenty of window between an April passage and a July 1 effective date. So none of that changes. I want to personally say, not on behalf of the council, but just on my personal, I'd rather not do any of this, but I'm just laying it out there so that people understand and are clear on their expectations here tonight. So, and should that, for whatever reason, be what takes place, that there's, you know, no intended impact to the effective date. So I just wanted to be ultimately clear on that. So I'm going to give deference to the Chair of the Ordinance Committee, Penny Jordan, who has led the long and laborious work on this. And have you kick us off, Penny?
Okey-dokey. Before I make the motion, I really want to stress that the work that we've done has been collective thinking. It isn't just the thinking of the ordinance committee or town councilors. It's all of the people that engaged in the process. And I have to say that I was in awe of the level of thinking, the level of input, the continued input that everybody brought to the table on this. And I'm not saying that we, I don't think we can ever create perfection or make everybody happy, even though that's what I strive to do. But I think we've brought together the best thinking and crafted something that I think we can really work from. So I'm going to make this motion. There's a lot of "whereas" is here. And so whereas the town council, do I have to read the whole thing? Or can I just say "as written"? Say me.
Sorry, minor technical problem there. Sorry, can you repeat that, Penny?
Can I, do I need to read the whole thing? Or do you want it, can I say "as written"? Or something like that? Okay, okay. As presented in the town council packet for our meeting, March 8, 2021, I put forward this motion regarding the short-term rentals based on the version that was crafted or written on dated 1/7/2021, using that as the basis for the discussion on the motion.
Second that.
Seconded by Counselor Caitlin Jordan, and we'll begin the discussion.
Jamie, how do you want to proceed with the discussion? Because there's now, do we want to take sections where people have identified changes and hone in on each of those, each section, resolve that, and then move on? Because I had proposed changes to the length of stay. And I have wording for that.
I guess what I want to, let me back up for just a minute. I guess what I want to establish and try and have a sense of consensus around, particularly because I think it goes to the point of what I said in the introduction of if something represents a significantly substantive change, that it may require us to take this down a different path. So I guess what I'd love to know from the council is whether there's anybody that's planning to offer up for discussion or debate anything that falls into that category. And so when I say falls into that category, maybe I'll give a couple of examples, which would be somebody saying, I don't think we should have short-term rentals at all, and just eliminate them altogether, or maybe not quite that far, but I think we should get rid of unhosted altogether and just have hosted and that be that. Those are the type of level I think I'm talking about, not the sort of finessing around the edges of altering the number of stays between, you know, within a seven-day window, or whether or not we're talking about 42 days of rental activity, or 60 days, or something like that. Is everybody sort of on the same page with me as what I'm talking about here? And again, I talked to Deb about this earlier and Matt to a degree, and this is not something that is a black and white, like, well, if it's this, then we should, or if it's not, then this is a little bit more of a feel thing. But anyway, you know, trying to, trying to keep to the intent of, you know, public's right to know and participate and all that kind of stuff is where this is driven from. So, so coming back to my question, is there anybody that is sort of looking to go down one of those bigger fork-in-the-road kind of decision questions? I don't see any, seeing head shaking now. Okay. So absent that, then I guess Penny, it makes sense to, you know, there, I believe, based on the proposed options that have been requested by individual councilors, that there, there's about a handful of areas that folks want to focus in on and discuss a little bit more. So Penny, if you want to start off with one, and we'll just go down the list, I guess.
Okay, I was going to start off with the minimum length of stay as it relates to a seven-day period. So what I had asked language to be crafted around, it was page eight. I don't know what page it is now, based on the different versions out there, but that a minimum length, no more than one rental use of a short-term rental shall occur in a seven-day period, except that in a primary residence hosted, no more than two rental use of a short-term rental shall occur in a seven-day period. So that was getting in that point of working with hosted and unhosted a little bit differently.
So are you, do you want to, do you want to move to make that amendment?
I move to make that amendment.
Okay, is there a second for an amendment offered by Penny that we alter the minimum number of stays allowed for hosted properties to go from one in a seven-day period to two in a seven-day period? Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Caitlin Jordan. So discussion on that amendment. Go ahead, Penny, if you want to talk about your reason for proposing it.
If I want to talk about the rationale?
Yeah, did you want to go first to just talk about why you're offering that amendment?
I'm offering that amendment because I, as I start, you know, as I start working through this and I started looking at, it was the unhosted that was creating kind of a barrier to the hosted short-term rentals. Because we've acknowledged right up front, primary residence hosted, we don't see that there be a problem, or minimal problems to non-existence. So rather than see, and just drive home one rental, why not look at, we're acknowledging hosted, primary residence hosted aren't going to present issues. So why not give them a greater number of opportunities to rent their spaces? And I think that what I, what we, what I tried to do through this whole process is understand the different needs and nuances based on how people want to operate. And so this was another way to say, here's how one operates. How can we meet those requirements in some way and still stay true to the other problem we're trying to solve, which is the issues that arise in neighborhoods for unhosted? So that was my rationale.
Before we continue with the discussion, Matt, I saw you promoted Maureen to panelists. Thank you for that. Maureen, thanks for being with us. Can you, Maureen, can you just answer a question for me to clarify for me and for the public? Under the current regulations, not what we're proposing, but under the current ones, what are the restrictions on hosted rentals, if any, for turnover and number of guests in a certain period?
Sure. So the current ordinance doesn't make a distinction between hosted and unhosted and primary residence, but this is one of those provisions that we have had people drive trucks through the loopholes. But it was very clear when this was adopted in 2012 that there was supposed to be limited to one stay per seven days. And if you want me to, if you, if it's all right with you, if I share this document, I can actually show you where that's located. Or you can just take my word for it. So the current proposal in front of you has this provision called the minimum stay length. And the language that is being deleted shall be deemed for a period of not less than seven days, regardless of the actual number of days the property is occupied is less than seven days. So it was always a minimum of seven days.
Whether it was hosted or not?
Correct.
Penny?
But as we recall, there have, we now folded in all types of rentals that are short-term under that one umbrella. So we now look at incorporating a different class of short-term rentals, that's a room, not a half of a house.
So is it all right with you if I, I'll go to the chair, if I share this document?
Yes, I thought you were pulling it up.
Okay, so I've got it already go, so. So hopefully all of you can see this. And the minimum stay length is the current proposal. And you can see right here that it says, no more than one short-term rental agreement shall be entered for any given property for any consecutive seven-day period. So there is a separate provision in the current ordinance that says that if you're renting for less than 14 days, that you don't need to get a permit. But it doesn't say that you have any relief from this minimum seven-day requirement. What you can see happening is people are taking interpretations that don't seem consistent with the intent of the original adoption. So I, again, will say that based on the legislative record from 2012, it was always very clear that there was only supposed to be one rental in a seven-day period. And what we've now learned from testimony tonight is that it's been reinterpreted to mean that you get 14 days that you can spread out how you see fit, as long as you didn't have to get a permit. I just think that's a great example of why we needed to rework this language and make it clearer and try to think of all the different ways that people were reinterpreting things. But it's the council's call on the end.
And the other reason I wanted to bring it up, because I, after having a conversation with some folks about this, I wanted to go back and check. Am I accurate in saying that people that have been operating a hosted short-term rental and welcoming, you know, more tenants than one per seven-day period have not been following this, correct?
I think it's up to interpretation. In my interpretation, no, they have not been following this. But we need language, I mean, I think the concern of the code officer is that he's not willing to push people when he feels that the language may be wobbly. But it's very clear in the legislative record from 2012 that the intent was that there was a concern with churn, one stay per seven days.
And I think it's
Nothing here that exempts those folks. The only thing that they're exempted from is getting an actual permit. And that, that language does not say anything, and I'm looking for that, that language now. It doesn't say anything there about not having to meet other requirements. It just says that if you're renting for less than 14 days, then you don't need to get a permit. And I did have it.
Wasn't homestay part of, we now folded homestay in, under, you're telling me that they were to follow the rest of the ordinance, even though they weren't considered a short-term rental?
No, the homestays are definitely a separate issue. The homestays are something where people were supposed to be limiting to two rooms in their home. So when folks are renting out their entire home, I think they still felt, fell under the short-term rental requirements, but they did not have to get the, get a permit. They were exempt from the permit. And you can see here, a permit is not required for a short-term rental, which with any prior short-term rental, does not exceed the aggregate 14 days in a calendar year. So I guess you could make the interpretation, this says, okay, you can do anything for 14 days. Or you can make the interpretation that you get two weeks of renting, two seven-day periods, without requiring a permit. I believe it's the second one that was intended. Clearly, some people are interpreting this another way. The homestay is a separate issue. The homestay is an existing provision. It says you could rent up to two rooms in your home, and it does not have a limit on how long your stay is. But the intent there is, and again, it's, that I think is a lot squishier, was really for people who are doing, sharing their house, having a roommate long-term. And these amendments are taking those homestays and pulling them in under the short-term rental structure. And again, the reason that's happening is because it was the council who heard, who said they wanted better enforcement. It was, it was your demand that you want a better enforcement. And it's literally impossible to enforce things if people don't get a permit.
Right, exactly, exactly. So
Maureen, thank you for that. What, the only reason I'm bringing this up is to point out, because, and you beat me to the punch on the homestay thing, because that was my next question on the number of rooms. But the point being that, number one, I think this underscores why it's so important that we're being much more precise in how we're characterizing things and laying them out now, as opposed to what was, in some cases, rather vague and ambiguous previously. So I think that's good. But the other reason I bring it up is, I think there's been a little bit of a feeling like something is being stripped away from folks that are doing hosted rentals. And my, my reading of this was, was that maybe that's not the case. And in some cases, some of those folks may have been operating outside the boundary of the previous regulation to begin with. Am I accurate in that or not?
Is that a question to me?
You or anyone, frankly, but.
That's not my interpretation.
Go ahead, Caitlin.
Well, I just, I have the same regulation as Penny. When we put this forward, I thought basically homestays were primary hosted, and they didn't have to follow the seven-day. So that's why, I mean, I felt like we're stripping away that homestay right that they've been operating under. I mean, it was my understanding that they weren't in violation, but now Maureen's saying that they have been. But I don't think that was the intent so many years ago.
I want to make sure, I don't think we can say that the people in the homestays were in violation if they were limiting their rentals to this current definition. But we have had people testify that in fact they were renting more than two rooms. And that, I think, is even beyond what was the, I mean, the homestay definition that we have right now is here that says it's accessory and incidental. It provides one or two furnished bedrooms for rent to guests. So if you were going beyond that, then yeah, you were violating the homestay. If you were not going beyond that, then, then you were not violating the homestay. And I don't want to make it sound like they were absolutely violating. I want to say that I think there was an expectation that the homestay, when we put it in, we put it in as part of the bed and breakfast commitments. And it was really an expectation that was really going to be legitimizing roommates. So, but we didn't put that in clearly. But the whole one to two bedrooms is definitely clear. And if you're renting at any time more than one or two, more than two bedrooms, then you went beyond the homestay definition. And if you were adding kitchenettes, you definitely went beyond the homestay definition.
Right.
Come to you in a second, Valerie. I see your hand.
Thank you.
Hold on, Valerie, because Caitlin, Caitlin had her hand up too before you, before this. I just want to, did you, did you get, talk about everything you wanted to, Caitlin, or?
Just the, the people that we've been hearing from that are asking for the primary hosted basically have been operating the homestays. And from what I'm reading in all of their emails is they've been, for the most part, following these rules. So what Penny's trying to propose, and I support, is just trying to make it so that they can continue, for the most part, doing things that they've been doing. That's all. Put my hand down now.
Thanks. Counselor Deborah?
I agree. I think we're kind of getting off into the weeds about what was written before, because we're talking now about Penny's, Penny's motion. And I, I think that the hosted homestays, and we're calling them hosted now, need to either say no time limit at all, or have the twice-a-week, which is what Penny's talking about. Because my concern is, is it going to be more difficult to enforce it if we say two turnovers a week, or if we say no limitation at all? That's my, my question, because I think that the homestays of hosted have been going fine. We haven't had any problems with it. I don't want to over-regulate it. Maureen, do you think that'd be more? Go ahead, Jamie.
Well, I want to say, I totally agree with you, and I'm not trying to take us off on a tangent. I think what I'm trying to articulate though, and lay the context for, is that some of the impetus for proposing this, it was suggested that, again, things were being taken away from this particular category. And when I went back and read it more closely from the existing language, And when I went back and read it more closely from the existing language, I said, well, wait a minute. I'm not, you know, depending on how you interpret it, I'm not I'm not sure anything was being taken away. So that's all. And so I I don't disagree with you that in in matter of practice. You know, we've we've all been talking about the need for streamlining and simplification and all that kind of stuff. My only point was this was brought forward because some folks were saying, hey, you're taking away these privileges that we previously had. And when I went and looked at it more closely, I questioned whether or not that was actually the case. That's all. Is there other discussion? On Penny's amendment that's on the table?
It's Yep, I just I have the same question that Valerie has just about whether it would actually be easier to enforce if we didn't put any cap on it or if so I don't know if Maureen can speak to that or but just for the hosted, obviously.
I I can't speak to that. I I don't know.
Go ahead, Penny.
I just wanted to say that I I agree and I appreciate Valerie's objection on that. That why have a why have a limit at all?
For hosted.
Agree.
Other discussion?
Um, Jamie, sorry, I don't know if you can see my hand raised. I so I I guess one question I have on that is, are you are are people proposing eliminating the limit on the number of rentals per week or on the forty two nights? And I think those are two separate questions. I would also I I just point out there is a point even with unhosted at which turnover does become something of an issue. I I mean, we we have a separate we have a separate category in our land use ordinance for people who are renting out multiple bedrooms on a nightly basis, and we call them bed and breakfasts. And there are numerous standards that are enumerated in our land use code for where those should be cited based on, you know, the the planning board, the, you know, the the planning boards, and the zoning ordinances, you know, requirements for how those impact neighbors. So I think there is a point at which unhosted unrestricted nightly rentals tips over into a different type of land use that merits some greater scrutiny.
We're talking hosted.
We're only talking about hosted right now.
Fair enough, but I mean, a bed and breakfast is a hosted short term rental. Essentially. I I mean, every bed and breakfast I've ever stayed at is.
Right?
So I, you know, I think I if it's if it's a matter of limiting the number of times per week, but keeping to that overall cap, I could I could maybe support that. But if we're just doing away with the restrictions, I think we're really talking about another land use altogether there.
But host unhosted is treated differently than hosted.
If I said unhosted, I misspoke. I what I meant what I meant was the was the hosted, excuse me.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, thank you.
A bed and breakfast also allows nine rooms versus this would only allow two.
Correct. Up to
Other discussion?
I I guess my question then to Penny is do you want to move forward with the motion having it twice a week? Or would you want to move forward with the motion removing the seven days for hosted? The seven day limitation?
I like Jeremy's argument. That's my thing. I'm going to stay with the two.
A good call.
Other discussion on the amendment that's been proposed to allow for two guest stays in a seven day period for hosted? Okay. Seeing no further discussion on that. Can we call a question on the amendment? Deb?
Counselor Musche.
Just language wise. What are we? Are we just voting on putting an amendment in? Are we going to clean up the language for the next vote?
I I thought you had that in the option. I think we already had it, right?
The only thing is, there's a little, there's some more language that I think needs to be cleaned up that's still in there, like when you go down to the definition of primary hosted. The last sentence says that each short term rental tenant must comply with the minimum seven day stay requirement, which basically it's not anymore. So that would need to come out. The last
Was that put in option three?
I I think I'm looking at version. I'm looking at version two, which is that option three.
No, they they got all
No, there was another piece that was option three. There there's this part about advertising that the wording didn't match with the seven day thing. So that's another place that it all just needs to match.
The the last sentence of where we have permitted short term rentals applicability.
Which page in line are you on?
Page six, line twenty eight.
Primary residence hosted, the last sentence specifically says that those have to comply with the minimum seven day stay. Like why that sentence is on that one, but not the primary residence unhosted or either of the others. I'm just saying, we're literally taking that out of that one, and that's the only one that has it.
Yeah, I flagged that on my notes that that one should probably just be removed because it's
Right.
Yeah, I saw that, that you did that. That's why I thought it was gone.
So it's just before we voted, I wanted to know if we're voting on on what exactly that was all putting some language in and then we're going to take some language out later or?
I think that's the easiest way to do it.
Maureen, do you have a do you have any guidance on just reconciling throughout the document?
I I honestly think you need to either give me a list and have me bring it back to you next month, or we have to sit here tonight and me revise every piece and have you vote on each section. Because this right here, the reason this this line was put in here and not in any of the other provisions is because the other provisions have these day caps. And if you don't put this in, it says no limit on the total number of days operated as a short term rental, which would actually conflict with your minimum stay paragraph. That's why everything in here has kind of a cascade effect. If you just took out the seven day stay, you could have someone say that, oh, well, this this sentence above means I don't have to follow the set the minimum stay requirements at all. So that's why this this sentence was added. And if you want to make these changes, we're we're going to have to really tiptoe through the tulips here.
Can we just have it say with the minimum consecutive day stay requirement or something like that?
We can change it because I believe that the name of that other paragraph is the minimum stay and we minimum, we can say it has to comply with the minimum stay length requirement. So that's one way to do it. But again, do you want me to start making these changes now? Or do you want to vote on each one?
But here, hold on. So here's the problem, though. Maureen, and this is what you and I were speaking about earlier today, is that it's not a minimum stay requirement. It's a it the 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 language as it's worded, as you just read it. Nobody can be compelled to stay for a minimum amount of time. The property can only be available to rent for a minimum amount of time.
Right.
So I I have trouble with that language in so much as it it obligates somebody to stay for a period of time that they no one can be reasonably obligated to.
So this is a heading for this paragraph. Change. We can change the name of it. It's just it's just a short reference to what we're talking about. And then you go into it and you can see right here that it says there's well, there's the less than thirty days, but there's 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 a less than seven day requirement right here. The property shall be remain vacant for remaining portion of the seven day period. So if you're uncomfortable with calling this minimum stay length, we can call it maximum rental
Period.
Intensity.
Period, period, period. Event. I think along those lines.
But again, this these words are used multiple times throughout the draft.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Hands up.
Oh, sorry. I put it down.
Jamie, I think I think we hit that point where do we do we want to move the motion on the change? And then because it cascades through the document that we have to then have another workshop to go over those cascading and move to, not that I wanted to do this, move to the April meeting because if we were to mess throughout this meeting, we're gonna it's just going to become messy and we won't know what we're voting on.
Yeah, I I agree with you that we're getting quickly down a rabbit hole here, which is frustrating. And I don't think it's going to make for a good amount of productivity, particularly given the rest of our agenda. In the in the time we have remaining on this item and given what we've what I'm what I'm trying to what I'm trying to thread the needle on here is whether or not there's a there's a way for us to effectively use this time to discuss people's general feeling and position on things. We do the necessary work to clean up the language and then bring that back. So almost almost use this as as I don't want to say a working session, but does everybody understand what I'm driving towards?
Yes.
Matt, do you have any opinion that you want to offer up?
If it may be helpful, Mr. Chairman, one thought may be that if you do, we could we could we could schedule another workshop. I don't think what you're looking at would be substantive changes when it comes to the ordinance side of it, or at least the amendments. It it sounds like it's mostly linking where there are subtle changes to bring that forward. The next option would be to on the item number forty three, which is the next item relating to the comprehensive plan. If you moved forward with that part of it, at least you would you would run out of some or or you would stay away from some of the conflicts that you had as far as noticing and having to have additional time periods involved. So and then you could come back and bring this for the April meeting and have and have it for action there. If that if that would be helpful because that would give you that time to, you know, to go through and find those linkages where they are applied. And then to make those changes and see if they it doesn't sound like any of these are really paradigm shift moments. They're mostly making a subtle change here, you know, going from one to two or a number of days perhaps that aren't really changing the language, but making sure that the language is is where there are connections that they those connections are are honored.
Maureen, are you just enumerating these?
I'm trying to capture what I think you've been talking about. And and if, you know, I thought if we just did like a really quick list, you might be able to come to consensus on that. And then I can bring back revisions. I have the first option was to increase the number of guests that could come to hosted from one stay every seven days to two stay every seven days. I'm seeing nods. So should I make that? Should I incorporate that?
Yes.
I'm looking to you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, not in my head yet.
Okay, good. Second one was change the, okay, the minimum stay paragraph. You didn't like the name of that. I'm going to go back and fix that.
Well, it's not it's just so I'm clear and I'm not trying to, again, I'm not trying to be difficult about about it. But what what I I think the the language in throughout needs to be from the the viewpoint and the perspective of is more the operator who's offering that property, not the the tenant or guest who who is staying there. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Like the the voice that it's in should be reflective of because because that's the person who's
Is that like maximum maximum rental availability?
Right, because that's the that's the person who have to, you know, apply for and uphold the components of the permit, not the the tenant has no obligation whatsoever in this.
And then the advertising item, that was the the option three.
So that's just it. This goes along with the wording for everything else because right now it says advertising of the short term rental must state that the short term rental must be rented for a minimum period of seven consecutive days. So it's it's just matching that wording to everything else.
So that basically would, I mean, if if then I'm just going to be having to delete that line. And that mean, just so you're aware, that means that if a short term rental operator advertises a nightly rate, people are just going to have to live with that. And we're going to have to hope that the operator is honoring the no more than two times a week.
One thing that for everybody else's benefit, one thing that Maureen and I discussed this afternoon is that we come up with some sort of standard boilerplate language that in addition to the requirement that the permit number be included in the in the listing that there be some sentence or two that's included in every that every operator would have to include in their listing that just makes reference to, you know, capitalistic regulations require that there be no more than, you know, one booking within a seven day period. You know, regardless of the number of days that you as a you know, you as a guest are booked for.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't want it
Whatever we land on for that language, but that that we have that be a requirement that it be included in in the booking listing.
Okay, that's why I flagged it because it just said a minimum rental period of seven days. So if someone saw that on a listing, they would think, oh, I have to pay for six nights or
Penny, were you going to say something? You're on mute.
No, my screen went blank. It's back now.
And then I think the option four was a recommendation to increase the cap on the primary residence unhosted to a hundred and five days.
Is that the one that's forty two right now?
Correct.
So before we go having Maureen change any of those things, I guess I I what I'd love to do what I what I I had hoped we could have done this already, I guess is, um, um, so it's imperative that whether we do it now or we do it at our to be scheduled workshop to continue this, that we need to land on the language. Okay, because we can't, we can't have another meeting like this where we're going into this level of minutia on these things and, and writing it on the fly. It's, it's, it's not a good practice. So if, if, if we're not, if, if we opt not to do it right now to get an understanding from folks on where they stand on some of these things, because I don't want Maureen to be coming back with three, four options on different things and, oh, are we doing option one? Are we doing, what, what I would like us to do is get to some level of consensus on each of these outstanding questions so that we can tighten up and write the language in a way that reflects what I expect to be the, you know, majority opinion of everybody. And then we're actually voting on final language when that, when that point comes. And if, if we have to make a, a very subtle or minor tweak to something at that point, that's fine, that's acceptable, but we, we can't be doing what we're doing right now.
Um, quick, Penny, Jamie, that sounds great, but we do have a motion on the table. Seconded, do, we need to take care of that first.
Just withdraw the motion.
No. I, here's what I, here's my opinion. It's that motion that ripples, that ripples through this. So if, if we leave here tonight without having reached a vote or consensus or whatever on that motion, what we're going to do is going to be back at the table with nothing driving the changes that need to go down through this document. That's my opinion. You need, you need the anchor to cause the ripple effect to happen.
Chairman, if it, if it may be helpful, if the council takes action on amendment, that would amend the initial motion and then you could come back afterwards and then take up that item as amended for action. And you, you would have subsequent amendments that would have to take place, but I would, I, I think that Counselor Jordan is, is proper in her, in her analysis.
Say that again? I, I didn't fully follow what you were saying.
Yes, if you, if you take action on this amendment, Counselor Jordan is, is, is correct in her analysis that then that would, you know, you still have the initial motion that was made to get the ball rolling by Counselor Jordan and then on the initial part, and then the, the council would then have to take action on the original motion as amended and then these other, these others would flow through. So you would have that language cleaned up and ready for action at, at a subsequent meeting.
So Caitlin. I would say I think basically we vote on Penny's motion and then table the original motion so that we can have all the changes for next month and then just take up the tabled item again and vote it right then.
Yes. I I, I get that. I think it leaves unanswered, though, some of these other questions that are not directly related to the question of multiple stays in a seven day period at a hosted property that, again, I, I, I think it would be counterproductive for us to have not given more concrete direction based on where where we think the majority opinion lies on these questions such that we can tighten up the language so that we're just voting that up or down.
So we do the same process. Penny initiated an amendment for one of those items. We vote that amendment, somebody initiates an amendment for another item, vote that amendment, then you table the whole thing, clean up the language, come back with all the language put in and vote it through. No more discussion.
Good. I think that makes sense.
Awesome.
All right, let's, let's try and get this tracked then. So the amendment on the table currently is to change the requirement from one booking in a seven day period to two bookings in a seven day period for a primary residence hosted short-term rental. Is there any other discussion on that amendment? Caitlin, your hands just go up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Now it's back up again. Okay, Deb, why don't we do a roll call on that amendment?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
No.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The amendment carries six yay, one nay.
Okay, so following on that, is there anyone else that wants to offer up an amendment for discussion?
Can Maureen go back to her little list she made?
Counsel Deveraux?
I, I brought forward the idea, I was looking at the the unhosted adjacent basically says 105 days for unhosted adjacent. And looking at that, I, I was thinking that the unhosted adjacent and unhosted rental should be consistent. One of them is 42 days, one is 105 days. I would propose both of them at 105 days. Because in that in that category, we're also going to have people being, so if you
People what?
Right, we've set it up so that if you have an unhosted short-term rental and you have friends using, using your place, even though you're not really renting it, that counts as part of your days. So I, I'm just thinking we need to have it where it's consistent, that they're both the same.
Caitlin?
So I, I guess I might be lost, but I don't think there is an unhosted adjacent. The adjacent, they have to be home next door. Am I missing a whole category?
It's called, it's called short-term rental adjacent.
Right, and adjacent property, they have to be home, so there's no unhosted. They're just next door. They're hosted next door.
Right.
There's nothing requiring them to be home.
It's they must be in residence during the tendency of a short-term rental. So like, yeah, I mean, oh, but I mean.
That's what I mean, that's, I just want to be clear that they don't have to be on site is all, but.
Right, but you don't have to be on site when you're hosting either. I mean, you could go out to dinner or.
I, I'm just trying to be clear in the language, that's all.
Me, yep. I'm just saying, I, I, I didn't read it as being unhosted, I guess. I didn't see there being a, an adjacent hosted and an adjacent unhosted. It's just.
So if, if, I, I think what Valerie, Valerie's trying to do is simplify. So if, and Caitlin was right on the money, then should the adjacent be the same as posted from a a number of calendar days? If what, if what we're trying to do is, what one is trying to do is create consistency.
Commissioner Noonan?
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not sure about that, Penny, but I, I was going to say, I, I'm afraid I disagree with Val. I just think that the adjacent, which I'll be honest, it's not a category that I'm entirely a fan of as it is, but I think, I think of it as more of like a hosted situation. So I wouldn't want to, in order to create equity, raise the number of days for unhosted, because I, I think 42 should be the max. I, I would actually, I'm not that I'm going to do this right now, but I would rather see it be like four weeks. So I personally am not in favor of raising the number for the unhosted. As to Penny's question, I'm not, I'm not sure how I feel about that one, but I see what you're saying.
Valerie, did you make a motion?
No, not yet. I've just, I'm curious if anybody supports that or if everybody's against it. I think that it would be nice to see it all consistent.
I agree with the consistency, but I am more inclined to make it match to 42 than to make it match to 105.
I think they should stay as they are.
I have no problem approving it how it is, but if we were going to match.
So does anybody have a motion or is there something else then?
No, it sounds like everybody wants to leave it the way it is, so we'll leave it that way.
So there were, there were other things in the list? I, I guess what I'm trying to discern on some of this list is whether or not it's something that we want to vote on as an amendment or it's just a matter, some of these things are, are just some of the cleanup things that we talked about, so.
Would the advertising boilerplate be an amendment, because that's new?
Maureen, could you scroll to the section where we talk about the requirement for having the permit in the advertising listing? No, no, oh, yeah, right, right ahead of it. Must include the short-term rental permit number. So I just think, I mean, I just think we need to come up with revised language here. I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's something to vote on tonight, but, or, or requires an amendment, but.
So Jamie, I, I think one, one thing that we could do and I can offer this as an amendment is that we change the, the heading of the next paragraph, minimum length of stay from minimum length of stay to maximum rental period. And if we make that as an amendment, then I could offer a subsequent amendment for how to revise the preceding sentence so that it, you know, references the next, you know, the maximum rental period rather than the, the language that's currently there.
Okay, do you want to?
I'll make, do you, you want me to do both?
Okay, whatever.
It looks like Maureen, right, two steps ahead of me. Yeah, so I would, I would propose that that we make, so the, the, change the heading of the, of subsection three to read maximum rental period and then in the, in, in that, the, the, basically the language that Maureen has just put in there, that the advertising referenced the relevant maximum rental period for the short-term rental type.
I don't think it's a, sorry.
Go ahead, Greg.
I, I don't, Jeremy, I'm not sure. I don't think it's a maximum rental period. To me, that would be like you can only rent it for four days or you can only rent it for seven days. It's more like maximum turnover or Nicole had had a suggestion.
Availability, I think I said.
Rental intensity, yeah, I like that.
I will take that as a friendly amendment.
Change that to the right before rental intensity.
Okay, so Jeremy has made a motion. Is there a second on Jeremy's motion regarding rental intensity language here?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Boucher. Is there further discussion on this? So we can come up with the, what that language is and provide that to short-term rental operators without having that be part of this here. Okay. Any questions, discussion on this change? Seeing none, can we vote this amendment, please, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The amendment carries.
Okay. There was also on our list number five there. So Maureen, I, I was not understanding the rationale that you were providing earlier for why this isn't here and none of the other categories.
Because the other categories have a cap. Because the other categories have a cap. For example, primary residence unhosed says you cannot rent for more than forty-two days. Short-term rental, you have a hundred and eighty-two days. The short-term adjacent is a hundred and five. The short-term, the rental hosted has no cap on the number of days, so that's why it still had that statement about. You see right here, where it says no limit on the total number of days.
Right, but so again, we're getting into the difference between operating and, and and.
Intensity.
Well, no, 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 but you know, the, the operator versus the guest, or the tenant, and so I, I, I understand what you're saying, but, but each of these other categories also, the tenants there must also comply with the rental intensity requirement.
Correct.
It just seems odd to me that we're calling it out here.
Well, the reason you're, because what this says is, it says no limit on the total number of days. And I'm concerned with the term no limit is going to be interpreted to mean there's no limit on rental intensity either. This is what we've experienced over the years. So I think you still need, now that you've changed this, now that you've got this rental intensity new title, you probably still need to reference it.
Yeah, I think, Maureen, I think what Jamie is saying, though, is that the subject of the sentence is wrong. Instead of, instead of the subject being each short-term rental tenant, the subject should be, you know, the, the host.
Yeah.
Well, I can change it to say the line in these other ones, it says the property may be used as a short-term rental for no more, and I can say the property should be used as a no, shows a short-term rental in compliance with the rental intensity requirement.
Does that address your point, Jamie?
Yeah, I, I, I think the language throughout should take the obligation off of the tenant. Because they, they have zero to do with the compliance with, or adherence to the ordinance. It is, all of this is about the operator and the, and the property owner. Does anybody else have anything on this? Do we need to vote this as an amendment?
I'll move it as an amendment for the purpose of voting, if that's useful.
Thank you.
I'll second, I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote on this one.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yeah.
This amendment carries.
Okay. What was left on the list?
This was picked up by Counsel Noonan.
What's the clarification? Can you restate it?
Well, it's just, it's, it's, I've got a correct reference. Short-term rental may be operated on a property in a non-primary residence when the short-term rental on its primary residence is located on the same lot as the short-term rental, not a primary residence.
Are we just accepting that as a correction? That's, we're not.
I'm hoping you'll accept it as a correction.
I don't think we need to vote on that. It's just something that was wrong. Okay. So we've done, we've done all of these then. So the only thing remaining is to reflecting these changes that have been made to go through this one more time to make sure that everything is reconciled. Is that correct?
I think so.
Is there, is there anybody else that has anything that they want to offer up now that we can go through the same process on? Now would be a great time to do it.
I did want to bring up the fee schedule, with the five hundred dollar fee. And knowing that hosted currently was exempt from ordinances going from zero dollars to five hundred dollars, and the amount of complaints against hosted were very low. Should the fee be two hundred and fifty dollars a year for hosted and five hundred dollars a year for unhosed?
So my opinion on the fee is that it's not something that intended to be punitive, or in response to property types that may or may not have generated complaints. First and foremost, the fee at a minimum needs to cover our costs for the monitoring analytics tool that we've acquired. So whether you're a hosted rental or an unhosed rental, you're still being monitored in the same way, using that platform and that analytics tool. And so I don't feel that any one property type should pay a lesser fee for effectively the requirement to subsidize that same service for, for everybody else. So I, I know that there have been some comments that have been offered up, that the proposed fee is too high.
I will add, that was before we made the change to two for seven days, which changes the revenue they generate. So I'm not as wanting or needing to change that.
So i- if, if, if there's discussion to be had about whether or not the five hundred dollar fee is too high, I think that's a separate issue than whether or not that everybody that's operating within this ecosystem should be paying the same and equitable amount. And, and in my opinion, everybody that's operating within this system should be paying the same amount. Are there other items that folks want to bring forward for discussion as possible amendments right now?
I just want to, I'm not bringing it forward as an amendment, but I wanted to just mention it really quick, because Jim Kearney has suggested it, and other people have talked about the fourteen-night subcategory. And it's my recollection that we didn't set that up because of violations. We wanted to make sure that everybody's permitted, and everybody is under the same umbrella. But I wanted to be clear about that. Is that your recollection, Jamie?
It was, it's my recollection from that standpoint, and yes, the more, the more carve-outs that we create, the more likelihood there is of people trying to circumvent the rules and bend those, you know, to their benefit. So if, so with every layer of complexity, adds a further layer of difficulty in administrating all of this and, and enforcing it. I did want to circle back to a couple of the points that were brought up in the public comment period. The first of which being, I can't remember who offered the comment, but there was a question about bookings from last year that were carried forward to this year, and whether or not contracts would be honored. I, I think we've talked at length about this in previous meetings and workshops. I don't know if we need to memorialize it further tonight. I'll offer my personal opinion and welcome the opinions of others, that any bookings that were made, knowing that rules were, you know, highly likely to change. You know, we're done so at both the operator and the, the guest's risk. And I'm, I, I have zero interest in grandfathering anything related to the new changes that are being proposed. I welcome any thoughts on that.
I agree with that position, Jamie, because we've been talking about this for a really long time. And, and even if the pandemic and COVID caused certain things to happen, we still knew this was going to happen. So I don't want to grandfather anything.
I agree. I feel like we've been talking about this for a very long time. We even put a moratorium into effect last year. So I think that once this changes July first, it's, it changes July first.
May I jump in, Jane?
Sure.
Yep, I'll just add that that also gets very, very messy. We would have to figure out how people could prove to us when they had their, you know, when those bookings are made. So I, I just, I could foresee that being nearly impossible. So I, I have a lot of compassion for, you know, if someone had a booking that got canceled because of COVID or something, but I just, I don't know how we'd go through that process, and I, that's, so I agree with you.
Okay, another question that was brought up, I think it was Scott Dobos, that brought up the question of penalties and maximum fine. I, I, I wanted to turn to Matt, because my, my recollection during our working processes on this was, you know, the penalties are clearly laid out here in the draft language. If somebody is found to be operating without a permit, they're subject to those penalties. And the continued violation and, and issuance of those penalties would, would eventually lead to some sort of legal action on the part of the town with that party. Is that, do I have that right, Matt?
Yes, you are, Mr. Chairman. Similar to any other violation of the ordinance, the code officer would take, you know, take action and, you know, issue such thing as a, like a stop work order for construction, or basically give them a cease and desist, and explain to them, you know, we get the town's attorney involved, and then we would take legal action. And then there are penalties that can be instituted there as well by the court system in the state of Maine. It's not similar to the, you can pay for forgiveness and, and just weigh your chances against the cost annually for being penalized. Eventually, that will work its way through the court system, and then the courts will, will put enforcements in there, and that could be much more substantial than any fines that are owed by the town.
So the plan that was laid out by Mr. Dobos is not in effect what would happen in, in reality, if somebody wanted to go that route.
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't ultimately be the, the path that would be taken. It's similar to any other violation of the, of the, of the ordinance.
Okay. I think that that was all the questions that were brought up in the pump. Did anybody else note anything that hasn't been answered through the rest of the course of our discussion? Okay. Anything else to be brought up now as a possible amendment to be added here?
I don't know if this is an amendment for the ordinance, but one thing I'd like to see when there, that's just asking for updates or what, but I'd love to see a one-year report back, or end-of-year report, to see how many complaints there have been, what categories those are broken down by, so we can determine the effectiveness of the ordinance changes in some form. So I don't know whether that needs to be language in here, or it's just more of a management report line item. But I would like to make sure that these are actually impacted, because if they're not, then we have more changes to make.
I would agree with that. I don't think it's something that needs to be included in the ordinance. I'd say similar to the other programs, the senior tax program and things like that, it's just become operating procedure with staff, so.
Mr. Chairman, I've taken down the suggestion, and what we'll do is, I can work with Ben and Maureen, and then look to have that as an annual report at the, towards, you know, the, the start of the year, or at the end of, end of December, to report out to council what the results are from the, from the first season, so we can, we can definitely summarize that.
I suspect it'll be used when, as the council will be obligated to, should this ordinance go into effect, that any appeal of decision of the code enforcement officer will be referred to the council to review. So I imagine that that would be something that the council would need to conduct those reviews. Is there other, anything else on this before we vote? I presume to table this, so that the reflected changes can be brought forward for a final vote at our April meeting. Going once? Okay, is there a motion to table these, this amended? Table the amended motion, the amended original motion to our April, with it as our April meeting?
Twelfth, I believe, Mr. Chairman?
Twelve?
Yes, I have the twelfth.
Yeah. Yep, April twelfth.
Table the amended motion to the April twelfth meeting for a vote.
Almost, almost.
Second, Counsel Deveraux, is there any discussion? I just want to thank the public for their comments tonight, and as I've done all along, thank them for their input and comments along the way. I also, I want to apologize that we were not able to vote on this tonight. I think, I think the, I think we should, we should have been in a better position to do that, and I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. So my apologies to the public that there's not a final vote on this tonight. I think the position of the council is hopefully clear to all of you that have been listening and watching. And that you're clear on, on where things are headed. And that you're clear on, on where things are headed. We've got some eye dotting and key crossing to do to just make sure that all of the language is reconciled and reflects consistency through all these changes that have just been moved as motions, as amendments to the motion rather. And I fully expect that at our April meeting, we will finalize this. And with, again, the effective date being July 1. So no impact to the implementation. But I, I personally would like to offer apologies to the public for, for not having been able to complete this tonight. So I think it's important and good work that we did to, to make sure that everything's buttoned up. But I, I regret that that's how this went. So in any case, can we call the vote on table link, please?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is item 10 on the agenda, number 43-2021, which we also tabled from the February 8th meeting. So is there a motion to take this item off the table? It's the recommended revision to the comp plan recommendation number 86.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Gabrielson. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Penny Jordan. Any discussion? Roll call to take this off the table, please.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this? It's obviously directly related to the previous item, but is there anyone specifically that would like to comment on this? Now's your opportunity.
For the record, I'd note we have 38 people in attendance.
I don't see any hands having gone up. So without any public comment, is there a motion to move forward with this having had a public hearing at our February 8th meeting and having been reviewed by the planning board previously? Is there a motion to adopt the new recommendation number 86?
So moved.
Shay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Gabrielson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll, please.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Is there, next item is number 11, number 52-2021, again tabled from our February 8th meeting on our goals. Is there a motion to take this item off the table?
I'll move to take it off the table.
Second by Counsel Noonan. Is there any discussion? Vote to take this off the table, if you could, Deb?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. So included in the agenda tonight is the updated draft of the goals. Thank you again to Nicole for all your hard work on putting these together. And thank you, everybody, for our work at our last workshop to put the polishing finishing touches on this. Does anybody have any thing that they want to bring up or discuss or add before we look for a motion to approve the goals?
Did we do a public comment?
Yep. Thank you very much, Nicole. Is there anybody from the public that would like to talk about this item? Be no hands raised. So without public comment, is there a motion to approve the 2021 county council goals?
I'll move to approve.
Counsel Boucher, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Counsel Penny Jordan. Any discussion? Move to the vote.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is 12th on the agenda. We're to hold a public hearing on the ordinance parking amendments for Kettle Cove at Crescent Beach and Seaview Avenue, Glen Avenue. So of the 34 folks we've got remaining in attendance, if you'd like to offer public comment as part of the public hearing, now's your opportunity. We have two sets of recommended revisions to the traffic ordinance for parking amendments that are included in the packet. If you could identify yourself by name and address and please limit your comments to three minutes. We will be happy to hear what you have to say. First up in the queue is Tom McCoka. So when Matt opens your mic, Tom, just a second. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Tom McCoka. I'm at Four Mountain View Road. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm representing some work that was done in the neighborhood to address some concerns at Cliff House Beach area resulting in the Seaview and Glen Ave amendment recommended by the ordinance committee and then reviewed at a 2-1 council workshop as well. For those of you unfamiliar, Cliff House Beach is a town-owned property at the end of Seaview Ave. It's a small pocket beach that's rock at high tide and can be sandy at mid tide to low tide. After years of, of rising use of Cliff House Beach, especially after some newspaper articles and social media hits, this summer reached a tipping point with very heavy use and traffic resulting in safety and neighborhood character concerns with an overuse of Cliff House Beach. COVID definitely drove it up, but this is a trend that we've been seeing for years and we expected to continue. To address this, we conducted a survey in partnership with first the conservation committee and then the ordinance committee. And we've had several discussions about the results. Quickly, this survey went out to 496 homes. 133 people responded, including 37 surrounding streets. And about 70 pages of comments, verbatim comments were recorded. So we got a lot of feedback. The key takeaways that we came away with were 82% of respondents agreed that the increase in people in traffic was really changing the neighborhood character. And 76% agreed that they were avoiding the beach due to this. So it really was losing the neighborhood character that, that the beach had, had been enjoyed as for a long time there. When asked about solutions, 82% agreed that resident-only parking restrictions from May to October might help. So we support the recommended changes to parking on Seaview and Glen Ave and hope it addresses the safety and small park overuse concerns that, that we've raised. Of course, if these changes don't have the intended effect or have other unintended effects, then we'll return and address those issues at another time. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, you're, you're on mute.
I beg your pardon. Sorry about that. Don is up next in the queue. If you could just give us your name and address, Don, before you comment. Go ahead.
Good evening. It's Don. I may, I just, I'm talking about the Crescent Beach rules that Matt was really generous to send out to us. I'm a non-commercial lobster person. Studied under Tom Schofield, which is like, he's such a cool character for a town. But I'm, I'm just not quite sure what the rules are for me leaving my car on the beach with, while I'm out with my dinghy. Because it, it seemed very clear about who can go on the beach and who can't go on the beach. But I obviously, when I go out with my dinghy, I just want to leave the car there parked on the beach and what the rules are for that.
Can we just get your last name and address too, please?
Oh, sure. KE and then E L, 142, Too Light Road.
Super. Thanks. I, I think we've brought it before about, so did you say you're a non-commercial lobsterman? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, that's my challenge because I have to launch my boat in the lobster dude's place, but that's, that's state property. It's not topic for tonight. But, but during, during lobster season, I park on the beach, take my dinghy and I come back and it might be there for an hour, two hours.
Okay. Cause I know we've talked at length about commercial fishermen.
Yeah, I'm a five-trap lobster person for, since 2005. So I've been doing this for a long time. And I'm not the only one. There are other folks there. Jim Hubner, for instance, on the planning board, he used to do this and now he's a, a commercial fisherman, but.
Okay. We'll make sure that we discuss and certainly address that if it's a gap that needs to be closed in some way. So.
Because clearly in the summer, there's no way I can get my car up on, in the Kettle Cove parking lot with the trailer in the back and then bring it back down to the beach afterwards. That's just not going to work.
Okay. Jeremy, did you?
Thanks for bringing this up, Don. A big clarifying question for you just is when you're launching your dinghy, are you doing that with a trailer or are you, do you have a dinghy that you're, you're keeping down there somewhere else that, that, you know, so it's just a car on the beach?
There, there's no place to park a dinghy right now. So I have to bring it on a trailer. So it's a, I bring my Mercedes down there with my trailer in the back and I just leave it parked, go, go out lobstering and then come back and then leave.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Next up is Jay Pearson. Name and address before your comments, if you don't mind, please.
Yes, John Pearson, 24 Elmwood Road. And I'm here to speak tonight about the Seaview Glen Ave amendment. First, I want to thank the, the ordinance committee and the council as a whole for, for taking this up. And second, I would ask that you please pass the recommendation. My wife and I purchased our home in 1998. And where she had grown up in town on Cottage Farms Road in the seventies and eighties. She was very familiar with the beach and had spent a lot of time down there as a kid herself. So we're very familiar with the beach. We started utilizing it immediately. And so thankful that we have it. And up until, say, five years ago, you could go down there anytime. And there was always a place to put a towel and a couple of chairs and enjoy the afternoon. It was very rare to go there. And although you may not have known those folks intimately, they were familiar faces. You knew they were people from the neighborhood. But the, the dominant thing that's taken over our lives, it's both a curse and a wonder. The internet is, has really changed the character of the beach. It's not an exaggeration because I speak for myself and my wife that weekends in the summer, we, we wouldn't go down there. The last time we attempted to was early July last summer and we walked down and we were coming down Mountain View Road and as we were crossing Shore Road, you could, you could see cars were parked on Shore Road. And as you made your way down Seaview, cars were parked on both sides of the road all the way down, choking that little single lane road to such a narrow point that was hardly able to get a, a car down there. And when we got to the top of the stairs, we looked down at just, just mass of humanity and, and just looked at each other and, and we just turned around and went home. And, and that's a bit heartbreaking for us, but that pales in comparison to what the people who live on Seaview and Glen Ave have had to endure. It is cars parked up and down both sides of the streets. Cars with two wheels on your lawn. People that aren't really connected to the neighborhood and leaving, you know, leaving trash is more trashier than, than I had remembered in the past. And I think that you folks can provide some relief. Cause the genie's out of the bottle and COVID or not, you're not going to put the genie back in the bottle. So I would really ask that you to, to, to pass the item and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next in the queue is Tom Myers. Tom, if you wouldn't mind with your address as well, just before your comments, please.
Should be good to go, Tom.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long night for you and I appreciate the discussion. I want to say the same thing to Tom McCoka, who represented the situation nicely. I just wanted to thank the hard work of the conservation committee, the ordinance committee, the individual councils who took the time to investigate and understand the situation. It would be really clear as to what you're voting on tonight. I also appreciate the hard work of Maureen. Who, who shepherded us through the process that we've gone through. Very healthy give and take process. With ideas and then catch the dumb ideas too.
Hey, Tom? Yes. I'm having a really hard time hearing you. I don't know if others are as well. I, I don't know if you can adjust. Still, still a lot of competing noise there.
Okay. Well, guess what? I'll just say thanks and you guys did a great job and I'll sign off. I don't know.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that we got a bad connection there, but.
No worries.
Okay. Doug McFad is next and I'll open your microphone in just a second.
Should be good to go.
Hi, this is Doug McFad, 25 Broadcove Road. First, I want to just thank the council and for all the work that you're doing for bringing all of these subjects to attention and to helping to solve the problems that we've got. I'm here directly to speak to the Crescent Beach parking ordinance that you're putting through. And to start by saying that we have a mooring there at Crescent Beach and we're able to access it last year. Sometimes we would use our dinghy that was on a trailer, but often we used our paddle boards that were on top of our car. And so I'm concerned that that is going to be a limiting factor that the new ordinance is going to not allow us to launch our dinghies from our car. And I was wondering if you could speak to that and to those that have moorings there.
Okay, Doug. We will address that.
Is that something that you will be discussing tonight before there will be a vote on this?
Yep. Yeah, I think like the non-commercial Fisher, Fisherman access, it's something we'll need to reconcile here. So.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll be.
Okay, thanks. Is there anybody else that wants to speak as part of the public hearing on this item? Being nobody, last chance. Okay, seeing nobody, we will move to consideration of the item, which is number 53-2021. The recommended parking amendments impacting the traffic ordinance. Uh, the uh, recommended parking amendments uh, impacting the traffic ordinance included uh, in the agenda this evening for both uh, Kettle Cove at Crescent Beach as well as Seaview Avenue, Glen Avenue. Is there a motion? Oh, well, before we get to motions, why don't we tackle these two things with Kettle Cove first, uh, just so that we're um, getting the other way. So um, let's talk about the commercial fishing um, access, not, not commercial fishing access first. Anybody want to weigh in on that with any solution? Jeremy?
So um, thank you, Jamie. Um, I, I would um, based on my reading and, and what we heard from Don earlier, I think he's covered. Um, so, so the, the way that it reads now, you can park on the beach if you are a, park a license-ly commercial, commercially licensed fisherman or a motor vehicle parked by someone with a boat launch pass for the reasonably necessary purpose of launching and un-launching a trailered watercraft. So if he's launching his dinghy from a trailer, um, he's fine, whether he's a commercial fisherman or has a recreational license. I think the point that Mr. McFad brought up around um, accessing moorings from a, from a paddleboard as opposed to a dinghy is a different one. Um, my personal feelings on this are if you need the beach to launch a dinghy, you should use the beach to launch from a dinghy. If you're not launching with a dinghy with it that's trailered, there are other places nearby that you can launch from, including Kettle Cove and including the, the beach of the state park. Um, if, if your preference is to access your mooring with something other than a trailered watercraft. That's, that's my, that was the discussion that we had in the ordinance committee and that's my personal opinion.
Um, Gretchen, I'll come to you in just a second. So
Yep.
it, I, I just want to make sure that we, uh, uh, on the first half of that, uh, it, it, does the language as it stands accommodate for uh, the, the fishing access that we just discussed?
That's how I, I read it the same way Jeremy does.
Okay.
It's like interpret it the same way, but if we think it needs to be clarified in some way, um, maybe there's a word missing, but I think it says what we intend because it's the boat launch path becomes important also.
Okay. So leave as is on that. Okay, um, other comments, reaction to the mooring access? Gretchen, sorry.
No, that's great, thank you. Um, so I, I understand where Jeremy's coming from. I'll just point out that for at least three months a year, it, it's almost, it can be almost impossible to park at Kettle Cove. And those moorings are on that end of the beach, so if you um, have a mooring there on that other end of Crescent to park, first of all, you have to buy a state park pass to park at Crescent Beach. So you've paid for a mooring and now you're paying for a state park pass. And then you're walking your paddleboard and your family and your cooler and everything that you're going to take out in your boat all the way down to the other end of Crescent Beach. I I think that's an unreasonable burden on people who have gotten a mooring. Um, and I, I'd also just like to know, um, if anyone has this background, have we tried allowing people even just recreationally paddleboard and kayak from Crescent? I mean, is it, is, is that an issue? My understanding is that the issue was people beach going. And I have seen, I've had that pass for a couple of years and I know we're trying to codify sort of what the traditional use has been. And I have certainly seen that as a traditional use, paddleboarding and kayaking from Crescent, so I, I just, I don't know if that has been identified as being a problem. I'm not sure why we're eliminating it or not allowing it, I guess, is my, so it's.
Caitlin?
It looks like Caitlin has a. You're muted, Caitlin.
Sorry, I went so unmuted for so long. Um, how many moorings are on that end of Crescent and could we just somehow tie, you know, like a similar boat launch pass to your mooring? So it's, it's not everybody with a paddleboard or you know, a kayak, it's just those that are accessing their mooring. Because you make a good point, Gretchen, about the hike, but normal people won't be making a hike to a mooring, just the mooring holders.
That's a good suggestion.
So that would be like a separate parking sticker? Sort of what you're talking about?
Something.
Yeah.
There are thirteen at the Crescent Beach end and there are one, two, three, six. And there are twelve on the Kettle Cove uh, under the, under that mooring permits, so roughly twenty-five between the two. One, if, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to counsel Newman's question, one of the uh, challenges we do have is enforcement. And unable to tell if someone has launched a paddleboard or something else uh, that that isn't as unfortunately obvious uh, to, to know if they've launched from there. Trailer makes it easy to know that someone's launched a, launched a boat and uh, from, from visual, visual side of it. Uh, last year, we had people who would say they were launching and uh, they, yeah, they were launching chairs, but last year was, I think, an anomaly as well in many ways too.
Got it.
Go ahead, Caitlin.
Well, and again, I should know this, but how many available moorings are there? So if you get a parking on a beach pass that just comes with your mooring, are we going to have a flood of everybody wanting to get a mooring just so that they can park on the beach?
I'm afraid I don't know the, the number of available moorings.
I don't think it's many over there.
I can't say for sure, but my understanding has been that they're hard to come by.
Right.
And I also don't know what the cost might be prohibitive as well and I don't know what they cost, but, oh, it's not, okay. That's probably why they're in demand.
Annie, go ahead.
Let's know what I was thinking.
Oh, you're, you're square lit up. I thought that's why, I thought you were starting to talk.
Uh, no, 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 no. I was just thinking, I, I, I think our objective here was to get to limiting parking on, on the beach. That's our objective. And I have to tell you, I agree with Jeremy. It's, you know, it's the way it is that um, and Caitlin's point about the moorings, that sounded like a good solution until you start going, okay, but can it be abused in some way? So um, it always saddens me that we have to create rules and laws because people make choices. Um, and so I'm, I'm with Jeremy. I, I think if you've got a paddleboard, you've got to carry your paddleboard. You don't park at the beach.
Jeremy?
I, I would just note to Gretchen's point too, that you also should have a state park pass or be paying the Iron Ranger if you're parking in Kettle Cove um, per, to state law.
Okay, um, we don't yet have a motion. Uh, does anybody want to make a motion here?
I, I move that we uh, accept the ordinance changes to Kettle Cove and Seaview Avenue as uh, put forward by the uh, ordinance committee.
Moved by Council Penny Jordan, is there a second? Seconded by Council Gabrielson, is there any discussion? Caitlin?
So my draft that I'm looking at for section thirteen, three, nine, it crosses, it crosses out for commercial fishing activities. I, I thought that was supposed to go back in because it basically makes it so that commercial fishing activities are no longer exempt for the rest of the year. What's the thought on that?
Recollection too.
Yeah. They show up cross out versus underline.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, as when, when you uh, read that section there, uh, uh, I was going, I, I emailed with Nate Perry earlier today about this because he had a similar question. When you read that sentence, there's a, there's a comma that's not really easy to see there. So it's, it, I think it's more or less identifying watercraft without any specific regulation, so it's the purpose of launching a watercraft comma for, for the commercial harvesting of rockweed or seaweed comma, or for public safety or authorized beach maintenance purposes. So it shouldn't uh, limit the, limit commercial launch throughout the rest of the year, but I think it just, uh, it takes takes that, uh, almost clarifies that restriction that was there before a, away.
I, I, can you explain that again? Because I, I don't get it.
Well, um, at first, it's, it seemed like it had, the, the way that that access restriction was worded was uh, the purposes of launching a watercraft for commercial fishing activities. And uh, so what it almost made it look is if it was limited only to launching a watercraft for commercial fishing activities, whereas in this case, it's for launching a watercraft without the qualifier limiting it to only to commercial activities. So it's for launching a watercraft comma, for the commercial harvesting of rockweed or seaweed comma, or for public safety or authorized beach maintenance purposes. So it's now that's a listing of three different reasons why a person should be launching a car there uh, and not solely restricting it to just commercial launches.
But we need to add in the commercial launches back in because you're going to launch, commercial fishery are going to launch for something other than harvesting rockweed or seaweed. That's the part we're missing. Like, like Perry, for example, doesn't want to go cut seaweed. He wants to go check on his oysters and his, his aquaculture.
Yeah, I think there's a comma that's marked for deletion that should be staying in.
I think what Matt's saying though is it's actually two different things. It's for the purpose of one, launching a watercraft. Two, commercial harvesting of rockweed or seaweed, which may or may not involve a watercraft. Or three, public safety and authorized beach maintenance.
Yeah, but the commas removed, so it's only showing two right now.
There, there, there is an edit that's needed to clarify that, but I, I think the, the, the commercial harvesting and uh, and of rockweed or seaweed is not intended to modify a watercraft in this clause if I'm, if, if I'm understanding Matt correctly.
I, I'm with Caitlin. We do more than harvest rockweed. You are, you're you're a commercial fisherman.
One, two, or three, not and.
You're saying, you know, watercraft, whether you're commercial or not. Even though do, huh, so it's just, I need to, I, can I see that somewhere where it's cleaned up and the commas are? So no person shall operate a motor vehicle on Crescent Beach except for the express person, purpose of launching a watercraft. For the commercial harvesting of rockweed or seaweed. Or for the public safety of authorized beach maintenance purposes. So those three things. Gotcha.
And that, and that would be year round. That wouldn't, because it's a separate section. It's not uh, the part above, which is the uh, limited parking uh, section of it. Because if we had to, you know, if we had to go down there to uh, for public safety, we wouldn't just want to be, we wouldn't want to limit ourselves to uh, driving on the beach. Oh, sorry, you did that i- in, in October and uh, uh, we, we can't launch there at that point in time, so that's, they're two separate, separate areas.
Can we clean up the language like Caitlin said? It's just so we can see it.
Maureen, would you? Would?
Bring it up on the screen?
Yeah, Maureen, would you be able to, to fire that up on that?
So is the difference between the sections then, like, this is no person shall operate a motor vehicle on Crescent Beach. It has nothing to do with parking. And then section three, thirteen, two, four is specifically about parking. So are they not allowed to park the rest of the year?
I'm, I would like to refer to my planner for that on that, on that side as far as the, the linkages uh, take place. I think she can uh, answer to that more clearly than I can.
Sorry about that. Um, so your current ordinance has this language of May through November and it says basically, if you're a commercial fisherman, you're, you have full access to the beach for parking, um, unloading your watercraft and then anyone else needs that boat launch pass. And then the activities, uh, again, I mean, I know that the, the um, the correction, the add and delete, yes, this, this comma here happens to be deleted, but this one is back. So it is launching a watercraft comma for the commercial harvesting of walkweed or seaweed comma, or for public safety or authorized beach maintenance purposes. So there's nothing that deletes commercial activities. Right. My question now is section thirteen, two, four is talking about parking, which commercial fishermen can park on the beach from May through November. Right? But then section thirteen, three, nine is only talking about operating a vehicle on the beach. Well, this isn't the whole ordinance. This is only selected sections of the ordinance, so I wouldn't want to speculate on answering your question unless I had the whole document in front of me.
But it does, under the prior section though, uh, thirteen, two, four uh, does carve out an exception for commercially licensed fishermen, that they're not limited by that time period during the year.
Right, right. So, I mean, if you're asking about the rest of the time period, it could be in a different part of the ordinance and I just, I don't have that in front of me. But everything in this draft is, I think, pro-commercial fishery. Right.
Your consent, address?
I, I think.
Other discussion? We, we had a motion in a second, right?
Mm-hmm.
Other discussion? Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. Um, I'm just coming back to the um, to the mooring. I just, I, I would, I would be loath to vote against our friends at Cliff House Beach because I think that they need um, they definitely need some, some help with their situation, but I just, I, I can't in good conscience, I don't think, vote for this if we are not allowing people full access to a mooring that they've signed up and I, I'm assuming paid for. Um, I just, I don't know if, it sounded like there wasn't a lot of other uh, interest in doing some kind of additional little parking sticker or something, but I would still advocate for that.
Okay, uh, other discussion, other opinions on that? Or on other components of the ordinance recommendations? Amendments? Um, I'm going to move away from Kettle Cove Crescent Beach and um, offer my opinion that um, I oppose the inclusion of the resident-only sticker for um, resident-only parking for Seaview Cliff House Beach. And I have tremendous appreciation for all the work that was done to bring forward. You know, the input from, from the neighborhood over there and the collaborative approach that was taken to try and come up with an appropriate solution. I think all the rest of it, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of and I think going back to our workshop on this. I think I was one of the first people to support extending the, the one side of the street parking further than had been proposed. I think that resident only parking is is opening up a significant and creating a significant precedent that I don't think is either warranted here or one that we want to be dealing with. With the avalanche of requests that are going to follow for similar designation for other parts of town. I had asked the manager to provide us with information confirming whether or not there were any other places in town besides the Garden Circle, Maiden Cove Lane area that had any residentially restriction and there aren't. There have been numerous times where other places in town have brought forward that request and, and the council has not gone in that direction. Surf Road being a recent example of that where one side of the street parking restriction was favored in, in, instead of going with resident only. The resident only on the Garden Circle Garden, whatever that is down there, emanates from a very specific problem with one house, one property that didn't have a driveway. And so the resident had to park on the street. It's a very, very tight area, I believe, based on the nature of the resident's profession. Frequent and emergency access in and out was needed. And that's how that came about. And I, I think it's such a specific and narrow example that, and none of us was, I believe, on the council when it came up. So, but I, I, I just don't think that it's a comparable example to this situation. I have spoken with the chief of police about this and he has significant concerns about being able to monitor and enforce this. And for all of those reasons, I, I don't think that it's necessary. I think that there will be significant relief provided by the one side of the street parking. And I fully support that, but I don't support the resident only designation. Are there other comments, other discussion?
I, I have something, I understand your position, Jamie, and I respect it immensely. I, and I'm going to go back to the fact that we, we have to constantly balance. And I, I'm not saying that this happening this resident only parking isn't going to open up other places where people are going to request that. But I. Times are different, just like they are as we talk about short-term rentals. And, and, and I really think that I can't, I want to strike a balance between Cape Elizabeth being the recreational town of Greater Portland or Cape Elizabeth being a town for its residents. And so I constantly weigh that and go, okay, it's about the people who live here. And we need to make sure that they are able to continue to enjoy the assets of the town that they moved here to enjoy. And I'm not saying I want a gated community. I'm just saying that there are mechanisms we can put in place that will allow us to balance the changing world that we live in every day as a result of technology. Balance that with what we want the essence of our town to be. And so that's why I really support the position of the resident only parking.
I. I have to agree with Penny. I think that they're talking about five months a year. It is so busy down there. And quite frankly, I think it's only going to get busier way the, the internet is and these, come find this hidden gem. It needs to be a place where residents can park and people from Cape can go and enjoy the beach too. So I, I support this stickers for parking.
Jamie, I'll, I'll just add a little bit on too, because I, I, I started off very much in the same position you're, you're advocating. I, I, I do think there's, I, I didn't, I didn't come to recommending this lightly. And I think what a couple of things that, that really made me feel like this would be a useful solution here. One was description from neighbors about how people are accessing the beach. And in particular, you know, looking at how people will go down to Willard Beach, see the parking lot area is full, pull up their Google Maps and then just search for nearby beaches. This comes up and then they come cruise over here. So, so sort of in, in a sense, just sort of stemming some of that cruising behavior that's, that has become associated with this beach because of the way that wayfinding now works. I think the other thing, and I, I do think we have a bigger issue, as Penny alluded to, with overflow impacts of recreational amenities in various parts of town. And I think that's something, you know, I, I'd certainly like the Conservation Commission Committee to pay a little bit more attention to. I think of places like Fenway, very, you know, various other places where the, the parking is, is not adequate for peak demand for those recreational assets. And what makes me feel comfortable with recommending resident only parking as a solution here as opposed to say someplace like Winnicke Woods or, or Great Pond is there really is, is no other, or there, I shouldn't say there's no other. There's very few other remedies that are, that are allowed by the geography. We just don't have the room to convert this park. Even if we converted all of it to off-street parking, it would not provide sufficient parking relief for the level of demand. We have other tools that we could use to alleviate some of that recreational parking demand elsewhere in town that just aren't available to us here in this neighborhood. And so that, that's, that's my logic for coming around to this position.
I appreciate the explanations. I still disagree. I think, and I think that the council will be inviting literally a parade of people from other places in town looking for the same accommodation and I, I think it'll be difficult to without being seen as purely subjective have any justification for why one deserves and the other doesn't, so. Other discussion on the question on the floor?
How do we want to proceed with Gretchen's thoughts around, is there a solution that we can come up with that will allow us to balance? I recognize again, it's another enforcement issue because somebody has to check permits, et cetera. And but do we want to try to solve for that at this point?
Does anybody have something that they think is workable?
That's what I've been trying to think of. Caitlin was. Okay, Gretchen suggested, I believe it was Gretchen, suggested that when you, or it might've been Caitlin. When you get your, your mooring, you get a permit. So if we go down that road, we get a mooring, you get a permit. Yeah, we got to check permits. Are we saying that we're accepting that there needs to be a position with the police department that is focused on parking in town? Because that's the only way we can, we can monitor it, monitor it because I don't think we want our all our police resources just focused on parking. It needs to be something, a position that augments in the police department. To get an internship from law enforcement at FMPC or something like that. Everybody's got, always looking for some of our internship. Something along those lines. I know most of my friends when we're in law enforcement, we would go for the job that various towns and do that type of work. So I think there's a solution. But that's kind of where I would head.
Gretchen?
So I, I don't know in general, Penny, what the answer to that is, but if we were to allow people who have a mooring to get maybe a different beach pass, it's a different color or something that shows that they have a mooring. I don't see that as any additional enforcement because if someone's going down there already to make sure everybody has a trailer on their car, then they can just check their color of their beach pass or something. So I don't know if you're talking more generally about, you know, is this becoming a bigger problem townwide? I, I don't know the answer to that, but in terms of just allowing mooring holders to park down there, I don't. If we could give them, just like I said, a different color beach pass or something. If someone's down there looking for trailers, they can just look at the beach passes too. I don't see it as any additional enforcement over what we have drafted here already. So that's my view of it anyway.
I was gonna say, you could just have them register the vehicle with their mooring so that they don't even need a pass. They can just be looked up that the vehicle is permitted to be there. Does it only be, what, Matt say 25 of them?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it may be something as simple as creating an additional decal that says mooring, mooring holder. And having that, having that displayed in a way that could be, could be obvious. If that would, if that would work around and then I, I don't know if you want to change the language, but we, you know, as, as Counselor Jordan and Noonan also identified, if there's only 25 and really we're talking possibly about three to five of them over the course of a year. I think that's something that I know Chief ends on the meeting as well tonight. It's something from an enforcement side that I know we can, we can find a way to, to make that work. And, and the, the big issue we had last year was just, was just rampant abuse where folks would come in and, and, you know, the, it was a slippery slope of saying that they were launching a watercraft with a wink and a nod. And, and then we had the, had the challenge of trying to enforce that and it just was overwhelming. And Maureen is reading my mind as far as making a non-substantial change in here that will provide for clarity. So thank you, thanks for that, Maureen.
Is that what we're expecting?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for being open to that.
It is, as they say, I think, as Counselor Penny Jordan would say, an elegant solution.
Okay. Is there a further discussion? Gretchen, just to want to say something, just get your hand up still.
I guess you got you.
All right, if there's no additional discussion, are we ready to vote on this? Okay.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
No.
Motion carries six yea, one nay.
Next up is item number 13 on the agenda, number 54 dash two, zero, two, one. I've been communicating with the manager offline here and I think we're going to push this to our April meeting. Is that right, Matt?
Yes, sir.
And my apologies to the folks from the Civil Rights Committee who I know it looks like most of you are still hanging on. We did have a rather full agenda with some items that went a lot longer than I would have liked them to have gone. So thank you very much for being prepared to go tonight, but also more importantly, thank you for your flexibility in being willing to push this to our April meeting. So, and also technically with it being 10:07, I'm going to need quickly a motion from somebody to continue with new business beyond our 10 o'clock hour. So if somebody could do that, please.
So moved.
By Counselor Jordan, Penny Jordan, is there any discussion, seeing one? Can we roll call that, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Where are we?
Number 14, Mr. Chairman.
So next up is item 14 on the agenda, number 55 dash two, zero, two, one. Recommendation from the Conservation Committee regarding naming of unnamed water bodies. This was a goal and recommendation from the Comprehensive Plan Recommendation Number 72. The Conservation Committee has provided an overview and voted six, nothing to recommend the names for the bodies of water that are included in our agenda. Do we have anybody from the Conservation Committee on the, on the meeting here? Oh, and Maureen is still with us. Is there anybody from the committee itself? I can't tell from the attendees now. Maureen, did you want to do anything to introduce us further or than I just did or?
That was a brilliant introduction. I have nothing to add.
Okay, is there any questions or a motion from council on the names that were recommended?
I have, I have some comments which are worth getting into tonight. So I would move that we refer this to a future council workshop for discussion.
Sounds like a fabulous motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Like an invite counsel Deveraux, any discussion?
That for you, Deb? Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 15 is number 56 dash two, zero, two, one. Consideration to endorse the Extended Producer Responsibility Resolution. Last month, we had a presentation from the Natural Resources Council of Maine providing an overview of the Extended Producer Responsibility Initiative that they're championing. We have sustainability and matters pertaining to improving recycling in our community is one of our. We have, uh, sustainability and, um, matters pertaining to improving recycling in our community is one of our goals, standing goals. Is there anybody from the public that would like to talk about this item? I see, Don, your hand is still up. I don't know if that's raised from before, if you wanted to talk about this item. Go ahead. You might be muted on your end, Don. Or not. Um, is there anybody else that would like to talk about this? Seeing nobody, um, is there any counselor that would like to make a motion or, um, offer up any discussion points? No, Deveraux?
I'll, I'll move that we, um, accept the resolution, that we vote on the resolution. I'm getting tired.
Appreciate it. Uh, is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, is there? Uh, can we do the roll call, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yep.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16 on the agenda is number 57 dash two zero two one. Receipt of the, uh, the audit results for fiscal 2020. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak about this item? Seeing nobody, um, we had a workshop meeting jointly with the school board last month, at which point the fiscal 2020, uh, audit results were presented by Run and Cursing, uh, Willett. It was a very favorable audit result. Uh, council appreciates the work of staff and, uh, the auditor for all the time and energy that was put into that, particularly, um, given some of the considerations that had to be made for COVID and public health reasons. Um, so, uh, seeing no public comment, uh, I would like to seek a motion just to acknowledge receipt of the results and the reports that associate with the audit.
So moved.
Move by Counselor Deveraux. Counselor Boucher, is there any discussion? Seeing none.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is item 17, number 58 dash two zero two one. Uh, referring of the fiscal 22 budget to the Finance Committee. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about this? Seeing none. Um, Matt, thank you for your work and the work of staff to deliver the electronic version to us last week. Uh, and we are eagerly anticipating the hard copies tomorrow. Is there anything that you wanted to add before we make a motion to refer this?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I will be, uh, I'll be very brief or try to be as best as I can. Uh, I just want to let you know this, we're extremely proud of this budget to come out of this, to come out of the box with this. Uh, very grateful to the work of John Porteraro, our finance director, as well as all the department heads for all their hard work on this. We did start the budgets process earlier this year than, than, than usual. Uh, we began our capital planning, uh, that, uh, you know, much of it was front of mind due to last year's budget and, and the reconsideration that we needed to take to get that forward. So you will see a number of those elements back in this year. Uh, however, uh, we are, we are trying to come forward with a very responsible budget to start. Uh, right now you, uh, you may, you may recall the last year's municipal budget experienced a significant revision to adapt to the pandemic influences. Uh, last year's budget decreased the municipal rate by 3.46%. Uh, sorry, last year's budget decreased the municipal rate. This year we're looking at a 3.46% increase and that's resulting in over the two-year term, 0.15% increase, uh, on the town tax rate. So, uh, we have tried to come forward with a very responsible budget, uh, where we have, uh, we are, where there are opportunities for grant funding, we are exploring all those options as well as lease purchasing, uh, for, for some of the heavier items and, uh, other items that have longer lives, uh, that also allow the town to experience the, the productivity of the asset while at the same time spreading that cost over multiple years. And all that resulting in an impact, uh, of a low, low amount in comparison to prior years. That being said, yeah, it was getting late. I look forward to working with the council and, and coming back next Monday night as we go through, start. And now, quick reminder, starting at 6:00 PM, Counselor Jordan, I have a note to myself to bring a pizza to your house because that was the deal. So Monday night dinner's on me and, uh, look forward to going through and all the department heads are looking forward to going through as well. So, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know there will be many more as we go forward.
Are you bringing beer with the pizza or?
You'll have to go to Cumbes for that, Counselor.
Thank you, Matt. I just want to remind everybody that the, um, the budget meetings, uh, will be at 6 o'clock instead of the usual 7 o'clock for a meeting. So, um, we can try and avoid being here at 20 after 10. So any other comment, discussion? If not a motion, please to forward, um, the 2022 budget to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Move by Counselor Deveraux, second. Second. I can invite Counselor Gabrielson. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is, uh, item 18 on our agenda, which is number 59 dash two zero two nine. A consent agreement with Two Penguin Properties LLC. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about this item? Seeing none. Um, Matt, can I ask you to give just a brief, uh, overview here?
Uh, I would love to, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what you have before you this evening is a consent agreement that has been negotiated between the town's attorney and Dr. Meyerowitz's, uh, attorney, uh, to try to rectify a situation that has evolved, uh, with the STR amendments and, uh, where there is a conflict between a proposal, uh, a proposed development that took place at the planning board received approval, uh, and, and it entered into the, uh, the site plan review process, without, uh, understanding that some of those changes that took place, specifically the last one, which would be converting, uh, short-term rentals from being a commercial use to an accessory use. And it has brought this property into a cash 22 situation. So, uh, to try to, try to rectify it, that's why we're coming forward with this consent agreement this evening, which would basically place the property into a legal non-conforming status, uh, that would allow them to do what they received their approvals for, uh, takes the conflict out of the situation. And, uh, it's the only example of this in the entirety of town, entirety of the Cape Elizabeth Township that has this as a situation. So it is not opening Pandora's box, but it is trying to correct a situation where you had an applicant who entered into the process. You know, with all, with all true virtues going forward and went through the whole process. And then with this one change that took place at the end has been put into a precarious situation, uh, not of his making. So that's why we're bringing it forward this evening with a recommendation by the town's attorney to, uh, to, to move forward with this consent agreement.
Matt, is it premature to vote on this tonight prior to having actually finalized those, um, uh, those amendments?
Well, uh, I will say that we did bring this forward thinking that the STR amendments were going forward. With the items that, uh, the area that they're looking at, which is specifically, uh, the transfer it from being, uh, uh, commercially used to an accessory use, uh, has not been an item that has been looked at for change. And, uh, it's been, that was one of the recommendations from the planning board that has come forward. So one way or the other, you can, you can enter into it this evening and it'll become ripe when the amendments, uh, go forward. Or, uh, uh, so probably be why, and you can do that now in anticipation of it. I know Dr. Meyerowitz would like to, uh, begin, uh, getting his building permits so he can start going forward with this project. And that this is, uh, this is currently sits as an obstacle for that as well. So, uh, if that is in hand, uh, he can go forward with what he needs to do. And it will also provide the code officer the direction that he'll need to know to, uh, be able to issue the permit, uh, going forward.
Okay. Jeremy?
Um, so, uh, thank you for bringing this forward, Matt. Um, I guess one question I have, and maybe this is as much a question for Maureen. And forgive me if I'm forgetting details because I'm getting tired. But, but, um, my understanding is that typically when you have grandfathered uses, if the use ceases, then the grandfather, the grandfathered use that was out of conformance then has to become a compliant use. So with this as a short-term rental as a, um, as a grandfathered, non-compliant use, um, for this property, does the consent agreement speak to, you know, how, what, what happens, you know, define how that, that use becomes, you know? Is it like they don't renew their permit for a year and then the grandfather goes away? Like, how does, how does this, how does this grandfathered use come into compliance at some point?
One of the conditions of approval with the approval of the project was that it needed to have a short-term rental on the first floor.
Right. I guess what I'm asking though is like, are, are we allowing this grandfathered use to run for the duration of the property until they come back for site plan review at some point in the future? Or are we saying that if they lapse in their use of the property as a short-term rental, that the grandfathering would, would, would go away as well?
Well, it's, it would still have to have a commercial use on the first floor to be, to be compliant, uh, due to town center zoning. Uh, the cash 22 is that with this becoming, uh, with, with short-term rental going to become an accessory use versus a commercial use is, is, in a sense, you're, you're governing the STR as a commercial use, uh, once the ordinance has moved on to call it an accessory use. So, uh, if, if there's a change that would take place, then it would have to be, you know, if you wanted to put in a, a television repair shop on the first floor and that meets a commercial use, then that would be fine. It would have, but it would still have to be a commercial use. This would be more or less grandfathering the, the short-term rental as a commercial use. But if, uh, but if that, if that failed to be, then you, then you would be out of compliance with the approval. And we'd have to do, we'd have to pursue that similar with others, uh, the other mechanisms, I, I would say.
Counselor Deveraux?
You know, it's so late. I, I would really prefer to table this so that we have time to discuss it. And, um, where it's not 10:24 at night, um, I think it would do it justice if we, we did that.
Mr. Chairman, I say that we have a public comment hand raised too. I don't know if they, I can't recall if we opened that for this item or not.
Um, I did and nobody spoke, but go ahead. Um, we'll do that.
Dr. Zevus, you should be active now.
Thank you very much for being patient during this entire process. It's certainly been, I would use the word entertaining to listen to the last three and a half hours, but, you know, I, I thank you for all of your tireless work on, on all of these topics that I would normally run away screaming from. So the, you know, it, it, what, the situation that you have in front of you is basically to avoid a lawsuit by my attorney against the town. We have, the, the, the point of this agreement is to simply allow my project to continue. When, uh, in standard fashion, when the, the planning board approves a use for a lot, um, that lot is grandfathered. There is a typical, I, I believe that, Matt, you can correct me on this, but there is a window where changes to the zoning ordinance can occur that could be retroactively applied. In this case, that window has passed. I believe it's approximately 60 days. And this approval was way back from October. I do not believe I, uh, this, this agreement keeps me from starting construction on the building, but it could, uh, conceivably limit me from getting an occupancy permit based on this use. You, you are certainly, you have your own ability to debate and merit this. Um, the recommendations for this agreement do come from pretty significant conversations between my attorney and the town's attorney. And, uh, the impression was that they would both wish to avoid litigation in this case as it would, uh, result in my favor. And it would cost, uh, both the town significant monies, um, as well as myself and having to go through that process. Additionally, I do believe the court system is somewhat, uh, encumbered with the events of the last year. And I would like to start my building. Um, we started this process just over a year ago. My initial site plan submissions were way back in April or May of 2020. I had a motion to approve back in August and September and I'm, I'm still waiting on this process. And so, you know, I, I had alluded in a prior conversation with the town council that I had felt that because this project was not a preferred one for various members, whether, that, without going into particular names, that I was being inappropriately delayed. Um, this submission conformed to the planning board. It conformed to the, to the ordinances and, you know, to be held up yet again at the last hour for debate, um, at 10:30 at night. You know, I, I understand that everybody's tired. Um, but this, this has been, uh, delayed for four months at this point. And I would, I would really appreciate some neighborly, um, constitution that we could move this forward.
Thanks, Dr. Meyerowitz. I, I don't, my, my concern isn't with the, um, isn't with the hour, uh, of the, of the meeting here. My, my concern is is more of, e- even though this wasn't an item that was up for debate, just, it, it feels a little weird to me to approve this prior to the specific ordinance amendments take, you know, having been approved that are what's causing it in the first place. But that, that's my only, and I, I completely understand what, um, what was just said and, um, it, it, it also sounds like maybe the building can move forward while this is still on hold. It didn't sound, sound like this was actually holding up shovels in the ground. So I, I meant, I'm not, if, 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 if that's the case, then we can tie this off.
The way, the way it's all worded is all about the amendments, zoning ordinance amendments dated October 10th. So I don't think it matters if the amendments are approved or not because the way that this document is worded would account for it being approved in April.
Say that again?
If you read through all of the, the clauses here, it, it says that the zoning ordinance is being recommended for changes dated October 10th, 2020, which is when that first draft was made. So even if we approve this today and we approve short-term rental ordinance in April, this would still stand. I, we don't need to approve one before the other.
Okay. I, I was looking at the October 20th date that references their decision. I didn't see what you were talking about. Okay.
I agree with Nicole. I, I don't think you need to.
So.
I'm going to motion to approve this.
Okay.
I second it. I second.
Motion by Counselor Boucher, seconded by Counselor Penny Jordan. Is there further discussion? Okay. Uh, do we have the vote, please, then, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
No.
Counselor Gabrielson? Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
No.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries, five yea, two nay.
Thank you. Next up is item number nineteen, sixty dash two zero two one, the Spirit of America Award. Some of you may remember, we have had past nominees for this, including in twenty nineteen, the Ponco Parents Association, for all the work they put in organizing and fundraising for the playground project. It's recommended that this year's nominee be the community ice rink organizers, the Seazacks, the Hoopers, and the Brandeis family specifically. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Nobody, is there a motion to nominate these deserving individuals?
So moved.
By Caitlin, is there a second?
Absolutely, a second.
Second from Counselor Noonan, any discussion? Being none, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Matt, do either of the executive session things need to happen tonight? Are they have-tos, or can we do?
If I could grab you for five minutes on the CBA negotiation, that'd be awesome, and you can start my evaluation at your leisure. I'm very comfortable with that part, so.
It, that's fine, and I can even address that, and it won't even take ninety seconds. So, okay, is there?
Maureen?
Was that, no, hold on, what I'm going to ask is if there's anybody from the public that's hanging with us here that would like to speak, anything that was not on the agenda, because we're going to go into executive session, and then we're going to come out, and basically the meeting's going to be done. So if there's anybody that wants to speak on something that was not on the agenda, now's your chance. See any hands raised? So with that, go ahead, Jeremy, for a motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, I motion that the council enter into an executive session pursuant to Title I M R S, subsection four oh five six D, to receive an update from the town manager relating to collective bargaining negotiations with the Cape Elizabeth Police Benevolent Association and Teamster Union, number three forty for the Public Works Department. Are we also doing the other part of this, Matt? The town manager evaluation?
Yeah.
Okay, and Title I M R S, subsection four oh five six A, to begin the annual evaluation of the town manager.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Deveraux, any discussion? Seeing none.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, we have three individuals here from attendees. I just want to let Rafina, Paul, and Chris know I'm going to remove you from the meeting, unless you want to, unless you want to jump out yourself, they do it faster than I do, so. And I'm going to now turn off the recording.